Alex, we all said in the council chambers there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Kim, you all set to go? Great. Okay, with that said, now is the time and place for the sixth installment of the public hearing in front of the Churchill Borough Council on the application for conditional use filed by Churchill Creek Project LLC for the property at 1310 Beulah Road to develop or sorry, to redevelop the property into a distribution center. Just to kind of bring everyone up to speed, because it's been a couple of weeks, I believe, since we were all together. Want to thank everyone for your continued patience as we work through this this virtual hearing process. As I mentioned, there have been five prior hearings on this particular matter. The first few, actually, the first four, I believe, were primarily taken up by the applicant and their case, and then the cross examination of the applicant's witnesses. As we discussed, we are planning this evening, after we had a couple of party objectors go at the last hearing, we're hoping to get through a good portion, if not all, of the unrepresented party objectors this evening, so that they can put on their their cases. Depending on how far we get, we may need to reserve some time at a future meeting if we don't get to everybody. We had also discussed having Dwight Ferguson present his case on behalf of Churchill Future. He has a couple of extra witnesses he's indicated, as well as his his clients, who may or may not testify as part of that case. That will be August 26, which is two days from now, at 6:00 PM, same start, same format. We are tentatively, very tentatively, looking at August 31 as a possible next date for carryover of party objector cases, whether it's Mr. Ferguson or the unrepresented party objectors. So that is not set in stone, as folks know by now, the way that we set the hearing is at the end of each prior hearing, we do specifically state the date and time of the next session, which we will do again, but as a preview, it will hopefully be August 26 at 6:00 PM. Before we get into the party objector cases this evening, and again, these are the unrepresented party objectors. We have a couple of preliminary matters we wanted to cover. I know Mr. Graziani has received some correspondence from some of the party objectors. And the first thing I want to cover is, I believe, there are some party objectors who who are seeking to opt out of party objector status, no longer be party objectors, not present their case at this time, but reserve their right to provide public comment later on, because, as I mentioned, towards the end of the last meeting, when Ms. April Klein was testifying, the time for party objectors to put on their case, and that includes their their testimony that would otherwise be under public comment, will be at now at this hearing, and then if we need to have the subsequent hearing. So party objectors are providing testimony and evidence in support of their position, and that's separate and apart from the residents and taxpayers of the borough, who, at the end of the hearing, will be permitted to provide their own statements and testimony. Also, as we've indicated throughout, due to the pandemic restrictions and some folks' inability or difficulty, maybe with the format, we are accepting written submissions from those individuals who want to submit them. Those are posted and shared by Mr. Graziani on the Borough website as quickly as he can get them up. I know he's working hard to keep up with that fairly steady stream. So before we get too too much further, Mr. Graziani, if we could go ahead and ask those folks, or I guess I can ask them, but if you could help me recognize them, if there are individuals who are seeking to withdraw from party objector status at this time, if you could please raise your hand, Mr. Graziani will recognize you, unmute you, and you could just confirm for the record that that is your what you're seeking. I see Mr. Ferguson does have a hand up.
I'm not withdrawing.
I was gonna, I was gonna.
Before someone else did, but I I'd like to suggest, if you agree, Mr. Rob, that a party objector does not have to present their own case to be a party objector. If they wish to join in the position of those objectors represented by my law firm or to join in the positions which are articulated by other party objectors, they can do that. They they don't have to choose between presenting their own case and withdrawing. I'm suggesting that, that, of course, is, as a solicitor, that's your determination, you know, to affirm or not. But that's the way I see it.
All right, thanks, Mr. Ferguson, and I don't disagree with what Mr. Ferguson has expressed there, you know. So the only thing I would say is that folks are are party objectors, and they're going to, they're going to be joining the position or joining another party's position, then then well, we'll just leave it at that. I think that's that's another option that's available to folks who no longer wish to see party objector status. They may indicate that they want to choose to join the position of a party that's already been identified as a party objector. Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Metz, before we get into seeking comment from these individuals, do you have any position or counterargument to Mr. Ferguson? I cannot, I can't hear you. You're muted, I believe. Alex, is there anything we can do on our end to help these guys out? Can we ask them to unmute, maybe?
Yeah, I've done that, but I don't see anything more I can do on my end.
Hang in there, folks, we'll we'll be patient here. Now, it looks like.
Can yours?
We can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. We don't have any any comment or objection. We would just ask that they're not going to present a case that, you know, they'd be limited to public comment. That'd be fine.
Thanks, Mr. Gallagher. Okay, with that said, Alex, it looks like we have Mr. McDonald, who's asked to be recognized, so if we can unmute him.
Yes. Hi, Gavin.
Yes.
This is Luanne McDonald. I'm going to not be an objector, and I will do my public comment at the end. But Mark, my husband, is still an objector.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you.
Alex, we have anyone else? I know we got at least a couple of emails from folks. Hopefully, they are they are on tonight, so that we can, on the record, confirm their position.
So I did have emails from Mr. Don DeFranco, Yolanda Covington Ward, I'm sorry, Jill Stewart and Robin Ranka. They had sent me emails previously, and I'm, it's hard for me to see who is in all the room, because people come in and out, but I don't see their names, you know, in the in the webinar room.
So that's Dr. DeFranco, Ms. Stewart, and who was the last one? It was Ranka?
Ranka and Yolanda Covington Ward. So Covington Ward, DeFranco, Stewart, and Ranka in alphabetical order, or R before S there.
If we are able to locate them at some point, they're certainly welcome to confirm, or, you know, I would ask them to confirm by raising their hands, so we can have that on the record. In the meantime, we will, you know, we can we can go ahead and move on, so as to keep keep this moving. So we will move it, move on then to party objector testimony. I know there is an objection outstanding from Mr. Gallagher that he submitted, that we'll ask him to articulate here in just a moment, but before we do that, I do want to emphasize, Alex, I see Ms. Stewart, can we let her jump in?
Yeah, she had her hand up, but it went away. Okay. So. Jill, you should be able to speak now.
Yeah, I was just raising my hand to let you know that I was here.
And can you, and Ms. Stewart, can you confirm for the record that you are seeking to withdraw from party status?
Yeah, then I can, then I can talk as a, at the public hearing, correct?
You'll you'll be permitted to provide testimony during the public comment portion of the of the hearing.
Sure, yep.
I mean, if that's not clear, you can feel free to ask another question if I didn't.
Well, yeah, I guess the question is, if I withdraw from party objector, what what does that mean in the long run?
It means, well, I mean, I can't provide you, you know, all the legal advice as to any potential impact. What I can tell you for the practical purposes of this hearing is, instead of going and presenting your case during the party objector portion, you will be permitted, as a resident and taxpayer, who's a non-party, to provide testimony during the public public comment portion at the end of the hearing.
Okay, yeah, I will do that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stewart, for confirming that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so I apologize. I think I was in the midst of, oh, we have Mr. DePerna. Mr. Graziani, can we go ahead and recognize Mr. DePerna?
Yes, he's been asked to unmute. Go ahead, Jim.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jim DePerna, 1616 Branning Road in sunny Churchill. And my testimony is that.
Mr. DePerna, I'm going to stop you there, because what we're trying to determine just right now, at the beginning of this hearing, is if there's any individuals who have requested party objector status, who no longer want to be party objectors or who wish to join the position of another party. So if you're going to be presenting your case, that will happen a little bit later on this evening.
Oh, okay. I am, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were starting a meeting.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. DePerna.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. So again, moving forward, what we're going to do tonight is try to get through as many party objector cases as we can from nonrepresented, nonrepresented objectors. And I do want to remind folks, number one, you know, there's no time limit, but please be understanding and and of others' time. We have a lot of folks we want to get through. We have been going about 25 hours in this hearing already. So if someone's already made a point, or, you know, we're we're not going to allow irrelevant, we're not going to allow repetitive testimony and evidence to be submitted. We will give you an opportunity to speak your piece and be heard, and that's what we promised you the entire time. However, to the extent that you're able to streamline things, keep things efficient, we really appreciate that, because there are a lot of folks we want to hear from. With that said, Mr. Gallagher, you submitted a letter this afternoon related to party objector testimony. Could you explain your position for the council?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rob. You know, we are appreciative that everybody has strong feelings and wants their opportunity to present their testimony and evidence. However, there is a record that is being made here, and that's why, through the course of the hearings, we've made a number of objections. We anticipate that a number of the objectors are going to present testimony and evidence in a variety of topics in which they are not, you know, qualified or have sufficient skill, experience, or training to offer expert testimony in, you know, these respective areas. We do not want to be spending the entire night making the same objections over and over again. So we submitted a letter just to memorialize that we do have a standing objection and that that be recognized. The weight of, you know, certain testimony is not the same as other expert testimony that the council has heard. So that that is the basis of our standing objection.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
We'd like to be able to streamline this process as much as possible as well.
Understood. Mr. Ferguson, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. Yeah, I I understand and respect councils wanting to allow the testimony to get into the record in in an efficient fashion and without perhaps continuous interruption. So I I understand and respect that. I would suggest the following, though. So the letter which was provided today to to the solicitor, I was provided with a copy of that, and it was just as Mr. Gallagher stated, just sort of a blanket objection in the event that testimony arose, which was outside of the person's competence, or was cumulative or irrelevant. So I think that the function of that letter would, or is, or could be to not, to make sure that the applicant and their counsel are not regarded as as failing to have raised those objections in a timely fashion. So, but I would suggest, perhaps, that during the testimony, that if any of those specific objections would apply to a witness, that then perhaps after the hearing, that they would just submit a letter that says, for example, you know, as to, you know, Mr. DeFranco's testimony, for example, or, you know, somebody that's on the list that we've been provided, you know, that they are asserting the objection that the testimony was outside the scope of their competence or that it was relevant, so that the, so that every, the, if we don't, if we don't provide a more specific statement as to what those objections are, then we can't respond to them, you know, in perhaps findings and conclusions or in briefing. And and everybody will perhaps be subject to an objection, so. And I'm not suggesting that any form of long explanation would be needed. I'm suggesting that whoever testifies, maybe we use the table that we've been provided in it. It would just simply say, my objection was to the relevance and to the competence of that of the testimony relating to traffic, for example. So so it doesn't interrupt anything, which is the goal, but at least there's a specific objection made part of the record after the testimony, so that we know what the objection was.
So that that doesn't sound like a bad idea to me. I don't think that's going to be overly burdensome, Mr. Gallagher. We could grant a standing objection subject to to that requirement. It wouldn't have to be, you know, any kind of, you know, it wouldn't have to be submitted the next day, but, you know, in a reasonable time period, if you could make a note of that. Would you, would you be okay with that proceeding in that manner?
Yes, that would be fine. Also, I mean, I'm while we hope that our letter and our standing objection will significantly reduce the number of objections. I mean, we weren't anticipating that there would be zero objections tonight, but, you know, with this procedure in mind, hopefully, that would help streamline the process tonight as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, and I think, I think we, I appreciate, you know, comments from from all council. We can, we could certainly, you know, we understand that that objection. I will do my best to keep things moving along, I think, for the benefit of the public. You know, and I think I mentioned this probably a few times throughout this process, but we are not bound by formal rules of evidence and a conditional use hearing before Borough Council, so that, you know, we don't necessarily have to take all the additional steps, if this, as if this was in front of a judge or in front of a jury. However, as I mentioned just just a short time ago, we can prohibit, you know, unduly repetitive or irrelevant testimony. So the testimony and evidence that's submitted really needs to be related to what council is is permitted to consider under the zoning ordinance and, you know, related zoning law in order to make its decision. So, you know, while, again, we'll give, we'll give folks a decent amount of leeway, we do want to keep things focused on on the relevant issues at hand. And and again, when it comes to whether or not someone's an expert or what their experience or education is, it would be my position, and I do, I'll advise the Borough Council of this, that it's really the Borough Council's, it's it's up to them to determine the weight and credibility of the various evidence and testimony that's submitted to them throughout. So just because someone, you know, may have training in a particular area, doesn't automatically make what they say correct and and what, you know, someone else says incorrect, but it certainly goes to Borough Council's determination and evaluation of credibility and weight of evidence. So with that said, Mr. Gallagher, is that, are you satisfied with that we can move forward?
I am satisfied. Thank you, Mr. Rob.
Sure, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Ferguson, for that that suggestion. Okay, we left the last hearing, and Ms. Klein had, was was putting on her case, April Klein, and Ms. Klein was unaware that now, or then, I should say, was the time for her to provide her quote unquote, "public comment" or testimony in support of her position. We, Mr. Graziani, has received a communication from Ms. Klein, and I see she's asking to be recognized, and we could certainly do that, just to confirm. But it's my understanding, and Mr. Graziani can correct me if I'm wrong, but that Ms. Klein has no additional testimony to provide, although she is reserving her right to cross-examine witnesses like any other party objector would be able to do it. Did I accurately reflect the, or restate that email that you received, Mr. Graziani?
That sounds correct. I did unmute her in case she wants to acknowledge that as well.
Gavin, April Klein, that is correct. I'm now going to add to my original testimony. I spoke with one of my neighbors who's going to, in her testimony, will cover some of my concerns, and I do not want to prolong this hearing. I think we've been here long enough. So I will not speak further tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. We really appreciate that that efficiency. All right, Mr. Graziani, if I'm looking at the correct list, I believe we're going to lead off this evening with Ms. Fox. Probably should have done this beforehand. We'll do it now. I know folks who have already been sworn in, you were still sworn in. This is the same hearing. However, just in case there's someone here who wasn't sworn in, I would ask the court reporter, before we get into the party objector cases, just to go ahead and just make sure we're covered to go and swear those folks in.
Anyone testifying tonight, if you could please raise your right hand for me, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you, Kim. Okay.
Gavin, one one more thing. So I've been trying to promote people to panelists, as I've seen them come in. And and, for example, Ms. Fox, Ms. Ray, Ms. Underwood, Mr. DePerna have been promoted, but there's a few names like Mr. Donski, Ms. Zoké. I have not seen them come in, Mr. Myers, Ms. Pellegrini, Ms. Ransom. I think that's Mr. McMullin. I haven't seen him yet, so I will keep monitoring and moving them along. But you you can follow the order as presented, so Fox, Ray, Underwood, DePerna, so forth. And I will try to keep pushing the folks over. And once they're panelists, and when your name is called, you just simply unmute yourself. We would love for you to enable your camera, and of course, you have been able to share your screen as you would like, and you may do that as well, and just wait for your name to be spoken, unmute, share screen, turn on camera, and go.
Thank you, Mr. Graziani, and we would request that folks enable their cameras. You know, you are providing testimony to the Borough Council, and, you know, viewing the the witness, I think, is an important part of, of, it can be an important part of judging credibility and and just, I think it's just, it's helpful for everybody to have a face rather than just a voice in the darkness. So it's not a requirement, but we would request that you do that. That said, Mr. Graziani, can we bring Ms. Fox to the forefront here?
Go ahead, unmute yourself, Ms. Fox.
My name is Sandra Fox, and I reside with my husband at 38 Holland Road in Churchill Borough. We have lived in Churchill for five years. According to Google Maps, our home is 814 feet or 0.15 mile from the Beulah Road perimeter of the former Westinghouse site as the crow flies. I want to start my testimony by recalling the expert witness testimony and cross-examination of Mr. Joe Sabato, Senior Consultant with Epsilon Associates at the Churchill Borough Public Hearing on August 9, 2021. Mr. Sabato presented the August 2, 2021, Air Quality Modeling Report commissioned by Langen for Hillwood Development slash Churchill Creek Project LLC. Mr. Sabato indicated that the modeling report assumed that vehicles would idle for 20 minutes each. In his report, he referenced the Allegheny County Health Department Air Pollution Control Regulations, C-FOCS Exhibit 1, as well as Pennsylvania Act 124, the Diesel Powered Motor Vehicle Idling Act, C-FOCS Exhibit 2, as standards with regard to truck idling limits. The general rule for diesel truck idling is five minutes, but there are exemptions. Mr. Sabato told me he was aware of a time exemption for trucks idling when in a queue of other vehicles. He acknowledged he was not aware of other exemptions to the general five-minute idling rule that would allow diesel trucks an unspecified amount of time to idle, quite possibly over the 20 minutes he used in his modeling. The following are excerpts quoted from Pennsylvania Act 124, listing exemptions relevant to diesel-powered trucks used at this proposed site with no time limit for idling. One, when a vehicle idles while forced to remain motionless because of on-highway traffic. Two, when a vehicle must idle to operate defrosters, heaters, air conditioners, in order to prevent a safety or health emergency. Three, when the primary propulsion engine idles for maintenance. Four, when a vehicle must idle due to mechanical difficulties over which the driver has no control. Given the nature of untimed idling exemptions allowed, especially with regard to the use of defrosters, heaters, and air conditioners, Mr. Sabato's calculations could be underpredicting diesel emissions. Furthermore, the Air Quality Modeling Report relies on figures provided by the Traffic Impact Study, as did the Sound Study. When I asked Mr. Sabato during cross-examination if he used the same figure of seven tractor-trailer trucks on-site at a time, a figure acknowledged by Mr. Mueller, the sound expert, in his calculations, he said yes. Mr. Prisk, the Traffic Impact Expert, acknowledged in his cross-examination that trucks would be entering the site about once every two minutes on average. It is hard to fathom no more than seven trucks on-site at any one time, as one truck entering every two minutes amounts to 30 trucks in an hour, 15 trucks in a half hour, or seven to eight in 15 minutes. We do not know how long it would take to unload and/or reload a truck at the loading dock and exit the facility, but a 15-minute turnaround is hard to fathom, especially with the anticipated restroom breaks needed for the drivers. It is also important. It is also important to note that the developers' plans, according to the August 2, 2021 Air Quality Modeling Report, Section 1.1, call for 49 loading docks and 325 trailer parking stalls, not seven truck spaces. So the figures used to calculate diesel emissions strain credibility. Diesel emissions matter. Under Section 304-23 of the Churchill Zoning Code, it states, "No pollution of air by fly ash, dust, smoke, vapors, or other substance shall be permitted which is harmful to health, animals, vegetation, or other property. This standard will apply as to its effect not only to neighboring properties but to other occupied or unoccupied tenant space." End quote. In addition, Section 304-31 states, "The proposed use shall not involve any element or cause any condition that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other property or persons, and shall comply with the performance standards of Section 304-23." End quote. I will focus the next part of my testimony on the health impacts of diesel exhaust, current and proposed standards for acceptable PM 2.5 levels, and the concerns I have for my health and the health of other residents and children attending three schools across from the proposed site who will be exposed to an increase in diesel emissions if council approves the conditional use application. Diesel emissions contain toxic vapors, gases, and fine particulates, which are easily inhaled into the deep lung. In an online overview of diesel exhaust and health by the State Research Division of the California Air Resources Board, the composition of diesel particulate matter, DPM, is described as follows in this excerpt. Quote, "DPM is typically composed of carbon particles, soot, also called black carbon or BC, and numerous organic compounds, including over 40 known cancer-causing organic substances. Diesel exhaust also contains gaseous pollutants, including volatile organic compounds and oxides of nitrogen. Oxides of nitrogen emissions from diesel engines are important because they can undergo chemical reactions in the atmosphere leading to formation of PM 2.5 and ozone. A review of the scientific literature reveals a consensus that diesel exhaust from trucks is extremely dangerous to the health of children and adults. The following health impacts are referenced in my written testimony, citing peer-reviewed research studies from 2002 to 2020, as well as the 2002 U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Health Effects Assessment Document for Diesel Engine Exhaust. Diesel emissions have been associated with an increased risk of asthma and bronchitis in children, stunted lung growth combined with asthma in children, exacerbation of existing allergies and asthma in adults, adverse pregnancy outcomes, lung cancer in adults, cardiovascular dysfunction in adults, and premature death in adults from all causes and from lung cancer and cardiovascular disease. Locally, fine particulate matter, also known as PM 2.5 and ozone exposure in the first trimester have been linked to adverse pregnancy outcomes for 34,705 women giving birth at McGee Women's Hospital in Pittsburgh from 1997 to 2002, with an increased risk of preeclampsia, gestational hypertension, preterm delivery, and low birth weight reported. Additionally, a Harvard study published in 2016 examining the impact of a low concentration of fine particulates in adults 65 years and older in locations across New England from 2003 to 2008 found that, quote, "Both short and long-term exposure to PM 2.5 were associated with all-cause mortality, even for exposure levels not exceeding the newly revised U.S. EPA standards, suggesting that adverse health effects occur at low levels of fine particles." Regarding the, quote, "newly revised U.S. EPA standards," and, quote, "referenced in the Harvard study," the authors are referring to the EPA's final rule published in January 2013, lowering the standard of acceptable PM 2.5 from 15 to 12 micrograms per cubic meter of air. In April 2020, the Trump administration rejected a call by scientists to again lower the PM 2.5 standard in spite of evidence indicating that the current threshold is insufficient in preventing premature death. The Washington Post, in a December 2, 2020 article by Juliet Elperin and Brady Dennis, entitled "Trump Administration Rejects Tougher Standards on Soot: A Deadly Air Pollutant", indicated that, quote, "Agency scientists had recommended lowering the annual particulate matter standard to between 8 and 10 micrograms per cubic meter in a draft report last year, citing estimates that reducing the limit to 9 could save between 9,050 and 34,600 lives a year." End quote. For comparison, Epsilon's August 2, 2021 Air Quality Modeling Report predicts an annual level of PM 2.5 from the proposed project to be 10.9, a level they conclude, quote, "will not result in a detrimental impact from air pollution," end quote, since it is below the current standard of 12. Most recently, on June 10, 2021, the EPA issued a press release entitled, "EPA to Reexamine Health Standards for Harmful Soot That Previous Administration Left Unchanged," C-FOX Exhibit 3. The release reported, quote, "Scientific evidence and technical information indicate that the current standards may not be adequate to protect public health and welfare," end quote. And that, quote, "The strong body of scientific evidence shows that long- and short-term exposures to fine particles, PM 2.5, can harm people's health, leading to heart attacks, asthma attacks, and premature death," end quote. If the current administration decides to lower the EPA acceptable level of PM 2.5 as is expected, then the developer's proposal will likely be in violation of those standards. Either way, scientific evidence demonstrates that our health will be a great risk if this facility is built, even with PM 2.5 levels below the current standards, and can lead to premature death. As a 67-year-old adult with asthma and with a husband with cardiovascular dysfunction, I am very concerned about our exposure to diesel exhaust and the resulting impact on our health and longevity. If the applicant's proposal is approved, while some may choose to move to protect their health and well-being, this may not be a feasible option for us financially, nor is it for many other residents in Churchill. Furthermore, the health of children attending Woodland Hills Junior/Senior High School, Pace School, and Beulah Presbyterian Church Preschool is in great peril if this development occurs. My husband and I take daily walks in the neighborhood with our dogs, which we enjoy and which is also a necessary part of our exercise. How will it be to smell diesel fumes and to choke from worsening asthma if this warehouse comes to pass? It may indeed lead to premature death for many of the residents of this now beautiful borough. In the Environmental Protection Amendment of May 18, 1971, the Pennsylvania Constitution guarantees the right to clean air as follows. Quote, Article 1, Section 27, "Natural Resources and the Public Estate." "The people have a right to clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of the natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. Pennsylvania's public natural resources are the common property of all the people, including generations yet to come. As trustee of these resources, the Commonwealth shall conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all the people," end quote. "I ask that you preserve our air and the health of the residents and students attending schools in our borough. Abide by the conditions of the Churchill Zoning Code contained in Sections 304-23 and 304-31. Uphold the rights guaranteed in the Pennsylvania Constitution's Environmental Protection Amendment and vote no on this proposal. Thank you. And I do want to add that Ruthie Ray will be following me with additional concerns regarding air quality and its impact."
Thank you.
After the examination.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fox. I did not mean to interrupt you. Thank you for your testimony. And you actually did a really good job of something that I should have pointed out early on, which is to speak. Folks, remember, there's a court reporter here. Ms. Fox did a very nice job of it to speak slowly and clearly to make sure that all of the testimony is able to make it into the record. So with Ms. Fox closing her case, we will then turn to the applicant first for any cross-examination. And after that, we'll open up to any other party objectors. We'll start with Mr. Ferguson, if he has anything after the applicant, and go from there. So, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Metz?
We have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. And I think, Mr. Ferguson, you told me going forward, you'll raise your hand if you have anything. So otherwise, I should assume you don't.
Yes, that's true for this hearing as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other party objectors who would like to cross-examine Ms. Fox? We'll give it about 30 seconds here, give you a chance to raise your hands and be recognized by the Borough Manager. Alex, what do you see?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from Borough Council while we have Ms. Fox on the virtual stand?
Yes, Councilmember Matt Castilla. Mrs. Fox, you had mentioned in the, one of your documents was the Environmental Protection Amendment, Pennsylvania Environmental Protection Amendment, and that, you know, we all have a right to enjoy clean air. How does that document define clean air? What metrics do they use to define what clean air is?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, with that said, we can move on to, as Ms. Fox said, we do have Ruthie Ray. It's not exactly in alphabetical order, but I believe this is a request by the residents to sort of piggyback their testimony because of maybe similar themes here. So, Ms. Ray, if you could unmute yourself, and we'll have Alex do that thing he does.
Good evening. And Alex, before I begin, can you make sure you promote Deborah Gentile? Because she will follow me.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Ruthie Ray, and I live at 35 Holland Road with my husband and two children. My residence is 1/8 of a mile or 970 feet as the crows fly by air from the Churchill Creek Project site located at 1310 Beulah Road. My family has lived in Churchill for 11 years, and I'm speaking tonight as a voice for my biological children, myself, for other Black families that reside in Churchill, Turtle Creek, Braddock, and Rankin, and ultimately for all children that attend Woodland Hills School District and attend the Woodland Hills Junior/Senior High School, as well as Wilkins Elementary. Who is at stake tonight? With this, as we consider this proposal, all of us, but specifically the children who will be attending school closest to the site. I am an educator and work with children every single day. What am I challenging? I'm challenging the Air Quality Modeling Report prepared for Langen by Epsilon Associates dated August 2, 2021. I specifically question Section 3.2.1.2, Roadways. Table 3.5, roadway links, I quote, "The traffic study included links on which there would be local traffic, but no projected generated traffic. To identify only traffic impacts associated with the project, links without project traffic were removed from the analysis." I also question Section 4.3. "This report does not speak to any air pollution above the Environmental Protection Agency standards. I question that. PennDOT also mandates an air quality study in high-traffic diesel areas. To my knowledge, this has not occurred or been reported upon in these hearings. What I would ask is that our borough conduct its own air quality study at the cost of the applicant. I continue by expressing my opposition of the Churchill Creek proposal and ask that the council votes no because of the known health risks that have not been addressed or discussed at all by the applicant that will occur because of the diesel truck emissions and the hundreds of trucks per day, the 1,000 or more employee vehicles per day, and the known current air pollution in this region, specifically PM 2.5, which is fine particulate matter. I continue with Section 5.3 from the Air Modeling Report titled Best Management Practices. The report indicates that no mitigation is necessary as impacts are below all ambient air quality standards. I feel like that's interesting. And so I want to say again that I'm opposed at a very basic level because I want to live in a residential community that I can raise my children in that's safe. Fundamentally, a distribution center does not belong in a residential community, specifically one the size of the proposed, 2.9 million feet. And there are no tangible benefits to me, only negative, potential negative consequences. Air quality and sound issues have not been adequately addressed, and an important study that will be unpacked later by Dr. Gentile found that- found that asthma prevalence and rates of uncontrolled disease are high among disparaged schoolchildren residing near outdoor air pollution sites, and children involved are exposed to higher levels of PM 2.5. We as adults must do what we can to protect our most vulnerable resources, which are children. We should be focused on reducing exposure to pollutants in the air, not adding to them. This distribution center will add additional pollutants to our region that is already ranking among the 7% worst counties nationally. Allegheny County ranks among the worst 1% of counties for cancer risks from point sources such as manufacturing facilities. We have one right down the road in Braddock. This proposal presents a violation of the Pennsylvania State Constitution, which was already stated by my neighbor Sandra Fox. Also, the proposal doesn't align with Chapter 304, Conditional Use Code Criteria for Approval, Section 304-31C. Just give me a moment. To share. And so this is what I'm referencing. I won't read it. You can see it. My neighbor Sandy Fox spoke to it around, no, the proposed shall not involve any element or cause any condition that may be dangerous. I also share.
Ms. Ray, I'm sorry to interrupt you, and this is probably a good lesson for future witnesses as well. If you're going to be talking about a document or study or something you're going to be sharing, you don't necessarily have to, you certainly don't have to read what it says. But if you could reference it possibly by page number and exhibit, whatever exhibit it is, that will make it clear for the record later on. We'll know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, so I haven't submitted.
Mr. Rob, I have a question.
I haven't submitted.
Hold on one second, Ms. Ray.
Are these documents available to, for us to review?
I think that's what Ms. Ray is just about to tell us, Mr. Gallagher. So hold on one moment, Ms. Ray. Have you submitted these exhibits and evidence prior to this?
I have, I have sent Exhibits A through H to Alex, and he did share with me that they're posted on the website.
That is correct. And which exhibit is this that you're referencing?
So this is a, this is a, this is my, I haven't shared this. This is my presentation. It's just my talking. I'm reading what's printed on the page.
Okay, thank you. So will you be submitting this as whatever, whatever the next exhibit letter is as part of your case?
Yeah, I can, if that, if that's, if that's so desired.
That'd be great. That saves you from having to read the entire thing and just, you know, makes it, makes it clean. So if you don't mind, I think that'd be a good idea, Alex. We'll make sure we.
This will become Ray Exhibit Nine or Exhibit I as she had numbered or lettered them.
Yeah, that's no problem, Ms. Ray. We just want to.
So I'll just stop sharing so that there isn't confusion. I'll just continue to read my testimony.
It's perfectly okay.
Can I move forward now?
It's perfectly okay to use the presentation that you had up. There's no problem with that at all. I just want to make sure it gets submitted after the fact so it's part of the record.
Okay, okay. All right, so this proposal also doesn't align with the Chapter 304, Conditional Use Code Criteria for Approval, Section 304-31C, as well as the performance standards of 304-23F. My testimony and expert, Dr. Gentile, will support my claim and position that this proposal will cause dangerous conditions and will create additional air pollution that will indeed impact the development of my daughter and son's lungs, other children in the region, and also put adults at a greater risk for respiratory issues, cancer, and asthma. It will negatively impact the health of citizens in Churchill as well as surrounding environmental justice communities like Turtle Creek, Rankin, and Braddock. The environmental justice is a concern because the children that live in Turtle Creek, Rankin, and Braddock come to school in Churchill every day. They started on Monday. And my daughter personally attends Wilkins Steam Academy, and also I have family and friends that attend Woodland Hills Junior-Senior High School every day, and these children are already burdened by living in communities with significantly high pollution. My daughter attends Wilkins, as I previously stated, which is less than one mile from the proposed site, and we also live one-eighth of a mile from the site. The Environmental Protection Agency defines environmental justice as the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. Let's begin with the number of trucks that will be traveling on the roads in Churchill. The Transportation Impact Study and appendices posted on the Borough website on June 9 of 2021, specifically a memo from Gateway Engineers to Langin indicating that, Mrs., I quote, Gateway comment. The proposal to utilize the data for a non-sort facility was primarily based upon the general expectation for a facility of this size with the employment level anticipated for the site. While the results were in range with the developer-provided information, this was not the basis for the use of the non-sort ITE data. Additionally, previous submissions have indicated a heavy vehicle percentage of 5%, which resulted in nearly double the currently proposed truck trips utilizing the SORT data in ITE. Utilize the non-sort data for truck trip generation to maintain consistency in the means and methods utilized to estimate the trips associated with the proposed site. Using the ITE supplement data for non-sort truck trips results in 68 a.m. peak hour truck trips, 55 in, 13 out, 64 p.m. hour truck trips, 25 in, 39 out, and 790 daily trips, 395 in, 395 out. So the number has continued to change. However, let's go with 790 truck trips daily and 132 trucks when adding the 68 a.m. peak truck hours and 64 in the p.m. This is just trucks, and the potential additional pollution of air does not account for the additional 1,000 to 1,200 employee vehicles. My concern is the number of trucks continues to change. At the public hearing on June 19, the traffic expert from Langin shared that there would be an average of 25 trucks in and out per, outside of peak hours, and 500 trucks in and out during off-peak hours, potentially 672 trucks daily. It's, it is unbelievable that this volume of trucks and cars will not add negatively to the current air quality in our borough and the surrounding region. Next, I will discuss air pollution very briefly. The zoning code specifically states that no harmful air pollution is allowed, will be allowed. The applicant chose to interpret this to mean no air pollution that exceeds current federal ambient air pollution standards. Even if the applicant had calculated the pollution levels correctly, there is a problem with the current standards, and we heard that testimony from Ms. Fox. In order to protect Churchill residents and the children that attend Woodland Hills School District, the Borough Council and Gateway Engineers should challenge the analysis by the applicant on the grounds that they do not represent current health science. I will begin with a few reports that are available on the Environmental Protection Agency website. It is important to note that these reports are self-authenticating. I continue with a focus on air quality and the potential air pollution that will occur if this proposal is approved. Here are the facts before I share the reports. The Woodland Hills School District covers 13 and a half square miles and includes 12 communities. There are five schools serving 3,514 students, of which 72% are Black children, and 2,200 of those students attend school in Churchill at the Junior-Senior High School, which is directly across the street from the proposed distribution center. Over 63% of the school district's students attend school in Churchill every day. This information is posted on the Woodland Hills School District website, and that is where I obtained it. Woodland Hills School District's service area accounts for 33% of the environmental justice communities in the county, based on the 2019 Environmental Justice Index produced by the Allegheny County Health Department. Areas with the highest scores or the highest priority with Allegheny County, within Allegheny County are Braddock Borough, North Braddock, East Pittsburgh, and Rankin. All of these communities have children attending Woodland Hills School District. The first report that I would like to share and enter into evidence as Exhibit A or Exhibit One, I'm not sure how Alex coded that, but it is titled The Air Quality Index Report, titled Monitor Values Report for 2020. The Air Quality Index Summary, so just give me a moment. I do want to share.
And again, these are posted online for people following at home if they want to get it and have it to reference later.
All right. So the Air Quality Index Summary Report displays an annual summary of air quality index values for counties or core-based statistical areas. Air Quality Index is an indicator of overall air quality because it considers all of the criteria air pollutants measured within a geographical, geographic area. I call your attention to the weighted annual mean, which is here, if you can see my mouse circling. For, and I would like you to look at the monitor for the address 400 Sherwood Road. So it's the second from the bottom. The address is 400 Sherwood Road on the Parkway East. The weighted mean for, from 2020 is nine for PM 2.5. For PM 2.5, which is particulate matter smaller than 2.5 micrometers, the weighted annual mean is listed there for the year. The monitor also takes into account, I'm going to move to the left here, the number of observations, which was 357, and then the first, second, third, and fourth max number. And this meter was at the, was in the, you know, based on the 98th percentile was 20. I enter this into evidence as a document that is a public document and self-authenticating that indicates that our levels of PM2 in this region, which is clearly less than, you know, a two-mile radius from this site, are already high. The next report, the Monitor Values Report, Exhibit B or Exhibit Two, I'm not sure what Alex identified, I'd like to share the report for 2021. And I do want to call attention to what's different. The look of it is the same, however, the annual statistics for 2021, I'm going to make that clear, are not final until a year later, so May 1 of 2022. However, this report was pulled just the other day, and this is our current state based on the observations. So I call your attention again to the 400 Sherwood Road Parkway East monitor. And so right now, we have two monitors there, 180 observations, and they're at a 10.0. So it's higher than last year, the one monitor, and there's another with 10 observations, the second from the bottom, and it's at a 9.3. So I would like to enter this report into the evidence for the record. And I have one more. So air quality will be significantly impacted by increases in traffic from the diesel semi-trucks and the proposed 1,500 employees traveling to and from work. The third report that I would like to share is the Environmental Justice the Environmental Justice Screen Report that I'm hoping, hoping that you're able to see now. The EJ Screen is an environmental justice mapping and screening tool that provides EPA with a nationally consistent dataset and approach for combining environmental and demographic indicators. EJ Screen users choose a geographic area. The tool then provides demographic and environmental information for that area. All of the EJ Screen indicators are publicly, publicly available data and simply provide a way to display the information in a user-friendly way. This tool came about as a result of the Presidential Executive Order 12898 under President Clinton's administration titled Federal Actions to Address Environmental Justice in Minority Populations and Low-Income Populations. It instructs all federal agencies to collect, maintain, and analyze information assessing and comparing environmental and health risks borne by populations identified by race, national origin, or income. EJ Screen is intended to better meet the agency's responsibilities related to the protection of public health and the environment. I would like to enter the EJ Screen Report as Exhibit C or Exhibit Three. It is a self-authenticated document, and again, comes from the Environmental Protection Agency website. Dr. Gentile will go into further detail as, as my expert witness to explain the report. This report, just in general, is from 2020 and indicates a significant risk. So this is our current data. I ask that our Borough Council consider how this proposal takes into account the current environmental justice areas surrounding our borough, the children that enter into our borough every day to attend school, and the negative impact that this proposal presents regarding continued pollution of our air and the negative impacts that the particulate matter will have on Churchill residents and children in this region. The negative health impacts and the burden of exposure will yield significant consequences to children and residents. My children and I should not be subjected to additional pollution sources such as PM 2.5, which causes death, cardiovascular, and respiratory disease. I close with questions that the council should seek to answer. What data is being reviewed from other high-traffic diesel areas in the southwest region of Pennsylvania to inform the air quality reporting? Did, did the applicant include this information in their modeling within their air quality study? They should be required to do so. To reiterate, the issue of environmental justice, a significant number of Woodland Hills schoolchildren are living in communities that are already disproportionately affected by environmental hazards that put them at greater risk for health issues. A distribution center moving across the street from the Junior-Senior High School would mean that they would be placed at even higher risk of health hazards due to the increase in air pollution simply by going to school every day. How have students attending the school district been considered? They are certainly a stakeholder since over 60% of the district's enrollment attend the school across the street. The applicant should be required to provide the borough of Churchill and its residents with a report on the local microclimate it will produce and how far it will extend off-site, and a reanalysis of the traffic study using modern scientifically defensible standards instead of those adopted in 2006. Also, the borough should conduct their own independent study of the air quality and seriously consider what is being presented by myself and other residents regarding the adverse health risks that will occur as a result of this proposal. The council has a fiduciary responsibility to, I quote, preserve and protect the health of the community and environment, end quote. The responsibility of council is to preserve the welfare of Churchill residents. I ask that you vote no on the Churchill Creek Conditional Use Application and protect our children and residents from being burdened by the negative effects. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Deborah Gentile, my expert witness, and I would like to share some information about her.
Ms. Ray, Ms. Ray, before we get to your expert, can you go ahead and unshare your screen? And we need to have an opportunity for cross-examination. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Metz. Do you have any questions for Ms. Ray?
Well, I'm a little confused.
Well, I'm a little confused. Is Ms. Gentile a part of one of the witnesses for Ms. Ray or? We have no question specifically of Ms. Ray, but...
Well, I think, I think Ms. Ray, I don't want to speak for her, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Ms. Ray said she is, will be calling Dr. Gentile as an expert witness on her behalf.
No, we didn't have any question.
Okay, are there any other party objectors who have questions for Ms. Ray? We've, before, before we allow her to put on her expert witness or her witness, I should say. We'll give it about another 20 seconds or so. Alex, are you seeing anyone?
No.
Okay. Okay, great, I think everyone knows how to use the hand raise feature by now, so I think that's sufficient time. Ms. Ray, we'll go ahead and you can go ahead and call your witness and ask your questions.
Thank you. Just to share some information about Dr. Gentile.
Gavin, excuse me, I have a question before we get started with the witness.
I'm sorry, Mr. Castilla, go ahead.
Matt Castilla, Borough Council. In the beginning of, of your testimony, Mrs. Ray, you had mentioned a number of different groups of folks, I guess, that you were speaking on behalf of. I guess, was that a general statement? Or do you have kind of, I guess, any type of organization or power to speak for those folks? Can you help me understand that, please?
Yes, so I'm speaking for my family and friends that, you know, I'm connected to, that live in this region. I'm speaking for myself as a resident of Churchill, my husband, who lives with me as well as my two children. And I'm also representing at my own will, speaking for other black families that I have connected with and talked to regularly about this issue that just may not feel as confident and prepared to speak before you this evening.
Understood, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council before we allow Ms. Ray to proceed?
Yeah, Gavin, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, this is Kevin Collins, council member. Ms. Ray, are you speaking for the Woodland Hills School District?
I am not speaking for Wood, I'm not, I'm not a representative of Woodland Hills School District, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Ray, go ahead.
Alright, so Dr. Deborah Gentile is the Director of Allergy and Asthma Services at East Suburban Pediatrics and Medical Director of the newly formed nonprofit Community Partners in Asthma Care. She is a board-certified doctor in allergy and immunology and has expertise in the diagnosis and treatment of allergy, asthma, and immune disorders in infants, children, and adults. She has completed medical school, pediatric residency, and allergy fellowships at the University of Pittsburgh. She previously worked at Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh, Allegheny Health Network, and Pediatric Alliance, respectively. Her current research efforts have focused on evaluating asthma outcomes and triggers in disparate children from the Pittsburgh region. Her work identified a strong association between exposure to elevated levels of outdoor air pollution and increased asthma prevalence and poor disease control in children. She currently has funding from the Hines Endowment to support this work. Dr. Gentile has authored more than 60 publications and is the recipient of numerous awards for her research efforts. She is a past president of her local and state allergy societies and is a member of numerous professional organizations, Dr. Gentile.
Thank you, can everyone hear me? Okay, I would ask to please put together a presentation on some of the work I've done that did enroll children from the Woodland Hills School District, and is focused predominantly on looking at the prevalence of asthma in relation to the air pollution issue in our area. So I'm going to walk through this presentation. The entire presentation has been submitted by Ms. Ray as Exhibit B. This is just an overview of what I'd like to cover over the next several minutes. She already reviewed my qualifications, which are on the first two slides, so I, for the sake of time, will not go through that again. I'm going to spend a bit of time talking about criteria air pollutants, and then what the adverse health effects are on these air, of these air pollutants are. I'm going to specifically speak about the impact of air pollution on asthma in our region, including Woodland Hills School District. She also started to talk a bit about environmental justice, I will spend a bit more time on that. And I also want to spend some time discussing the expectation that the EPA is going to reduce the PM 2.5 threshold in the future from its current level of 12 micrograms per meter cubed down to eight to 10 micrograms per meter cubed. I'm also going to briefly review the environmental assessment for the proposed site, and I'm going to end by just sharing two recent studies to show the impact of warehouses in disparate communities.
Mr. Rob, I'm, Mr. Rob, I'd like to place an objection to this testimony. It's irrelevant to the standards at hand. The issues to be testified to are values that are regulated by state and federal agencies, in or of not concern here. Many of the other issues are completely irrelevant to the conditional use standards set forth in the zoning ordinance for distribution centers.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, your objections noted for the record, overruled, and certainly you're welcome to cross-examine this witness when she's, she's completed her testimony.
Thank you.
Alright, just for the sake of time, my qualifications are listed on these two slides. I'm not going to go over them in detail. I, you know, am an allergy asthma physician. I completed all my training at the University of Pittsburgh Children's Hospital. I've been actively engaged in clinical research as well as clinical care for the past 20 years. And for the last 10 years, I spent a lot of my time focusing on asthma disparities in our, our region. I want to first talk about the Clean Air Act. It's the comprehensive federal law that regulates air emissions from stationary and mobile sources. This basically authorizes the EPA to establish the national ambient air quality standards, which are referenced in some of the reports that have been presented previously. The goal here is to protect public health and welfare, and they also regulate the emission of all hazardous air pollutants. The criteria pollutants include D6 pollutants, particulate matter known as PM 2.5, sulfur dioxide, nitric oxide, ozone, carbon monoxide, and lead. I'm going to spend most of my time talking about the top three, and that's why they're highlighted in red. Particulate matter is a quantifiable component of air pollution. It affects more people than any other air pollutant. It's a complex mixture of solid and liquid particles of both organic and inorganic substances that are suspended in the air. Major components are sulfates and nitrates, ammonia, sodium chloride, black carbon, mineral dust, and water. There's two categories of particulate matter. Primary are particles that are emitted directly from sources. That includes smokestacks, fires, construction sites, or unpaved roads. And then there are secondary particles. They're formed in the atmosphere from complex reactions involving chemicals that are emitted from industries, power plants, and vehicles. So the examples are sulfur dioxide and nitric oxide are emitted from these sources, and they undergo complex chemical reactions in the atmosphere that change them to sulfates and nitrates. And those also can cause pollution damage to the health. How does PM cause adverse health effects? If you look at the left-hand side of this slide, we're going to start by looking at defined beach sand. It's very small, it's what we call 90 microns in diameter, very small. Moving upward, you see a human hair is 50 to 70 micrometers in diameter, so that's even smaller than the sand. If you want to look at PM 10, which is the higher, higher weight pollutants, those are shown on the blue beads right on the hair. Those are less than 10 microns in diameter. The PM 2.5 is even smaller. It's shown by the red beads on the blue beads, which are blown up above. And this is the pollution I'm going to talk about, extremely small, it's invisible, you can't see it. What happens is you breathe in, and these larger particles will hit the airway. It'll hit the nose, the throat, the upper airway, and will be filtered out. These smaller particles, including PM 2.5, will actually breathe, be breathed down deep into the lungs. The airways branch off, and these particles actually reach the tiniest portions of the lung called the alveoli. These are the air sacs where the oxygen is exchanged from the air right into the bloodstream in our body. Very small sizes, reaching very deep into the lungs. Once this, these particles, the PM 2.5, are in the lungs and in the alveoli, again, they can cross right over into the blood and cause distal effects. And these will include things like heart problems, which we'll talk about, as well as even neurologic problems, including dementia. The EPA has different scientific panels to look at all these different criteria pollutant. More recently, in 2019, the scientific panel looked at the PM 2.5 data. 2017, they looked at the sulfur oxide, and in 2016, the nitrogen. And basically, what they can do is they look at all the evidence. They look at laboratory animal evidence, human study evidence, epidemiologic studies. And they try to determine if there's enough evidence to say a pollutant can cause an adverse health effect or not. And so they'll, based on all this data that they look at, they'll actually determine if a pollutant is causal or likely to be causal or not causal of an event. Causal means the pollutant results in negative health effects at relevant exposures, and that's based on multiple studies encompassing multiple lines of evidence. They've pretty much ruled out chance, confounding factors, and biases. This is very strong evidence, and the EPA panels will give this label to health effects that they have determined are caused by air pollution. They also can give a strong label called likely to be causal. What this means is that the study show a relationship between the pollutant exposure and negative health effects, and it's not explained by chance, confounding factors, or biases. But it's still not quite strong enough to say it's causal. There are some uncertainties in the overall health effects. A lot of this is due to them trying to tease apart different independent pollutants. For instance, sulfur dioxide is a component of PM 2.5, it's often to tease those two apart. There's also some smaller studies with some of these, and as time goes on, those studies get expanded. So at this point, they feel that there's, we're not able to, you know, separate the effect of the co-occurring pollutants enough, and, you know, larger studies are needed and studies to show more consistent results. But again, that's a very strong label, both causal and likely to be causal. I'm going to briefly review the causality of adverse health effects for several of the criteria pollutants, starting with the PM 2.5. Basically, a causal relationship has already been established between short-term, which is hours today's exposure, and long-term, which is months to years' exposure of PM 2.5 and mortality. This means that the evidence is strong and, and shows that there's, that PM 2.5 causes both death as well as, in the short-term, as well as in the long-term. There's also a causal relationship between PM 2.5 short-term and long-term exposure and cardiovascular events. These are things like stroke, heart attack, arrhythmia, and congestive heart failure. A causal relationship has been established. There's likely to be causal relationship between short-term and long-term exposure and respiratory effects, and that includes things like asthma. There's likely to be a causal relationship between PM 2.5 and cancer as well as long-term exposure to PM 2.5 and nervous system effects, specifically dementia. Sulfur dioxide, a causal relationship is established for short-term exposure and respiratory effects, particularly asthma. And for nitrogen dioxide, there's a causal relationship between short-term exposure and respiratory effects, and there's likely to be a causal relationship between long-term exposure and respiratory effects. Real briefly, I'm just going to present you some asthma facts before I walk you through the study results I found. Asthma affects about 25 million Americans overall, it affects about 8% of our population. It accounts for 10 million doctor business annually, 1.6 million emergency room business annually, 180,000 hospitalizations, and about 3,500 deaths annually, people still die of asthma. The annual cost due to asthma are about $90 billion, and that's both related to medical costs as well as workdays that are lost by parents or the patients who themselves have asthma. Children are a very vulnerable population for asthma, and I'm going to talk a bit about that more on the next slide. And asthma is the most common chronic disease among children, and it's the most common chronic disease that contributes to school absenteeism in children. Numerous studies have shown that asthma impacts school performance, physical activity, and even socialization. A lot of the children with asthma are missing school because they're having trouble with night breathing, so they're not sleeping well, needing to go to doctors' offices. A lot of these children will be triggered by exercise, so they won't participate in activity. And many of them are embarrassed by their disease, so they'll actually not socialize as much. Asthma is recognized as a disease of disparities. African-Americans are five times more likely to visit emergency departments, and African-Americans are three times more likely to die from asthma. And I just want to walk you through on this slide the impact of air pollution on asthma. On the left-hand side, we're looking at a schematic, and the left side of that shows what a normal lung looks like, and right-hand side shows an asthmatic lung. I like to think of the lungs as basically an upside-down tree with the breathing tube coming down, and then you have branches of airways going off. And again, they go to these smaller branches that end in the alveoli, which will interact with the bloodstream. Basically, in the normal lung, as you can see, you have a well-organized lining. It's not swollen. There's a little bit of mucus in our airways to help keep things lubricated. And we have muscles around our breathing tubes. And then a healthy person without asthma, that muscle's very relaxed, and that breathing tube is wide open. Patients who have asthma often describe an attack as feeling like they're breathing through a straw. There's three hallmarks here I'm going to show you. One thing that happens is that those breathing muscles tighten, and that itself makes the breathing tube smaller. We also see inflammation or swelling, just like when you get a cold or have allergies in your nose. When you have an asthma attack, you have swelling in your lung linings, and that makes that lining much bigger, and that makes the airways smaller. And then the other thing that decreases the airway size is that there's excess mucus being produced, lots of it. And so that can actually cause blockages in those breathing tubes. What happens with air pollution is that you breathe in that air pollution, and it contains these reactive sulfates and nitrates that I mentioned earlier, and they actually work on your sensory nerves. These are nerves that are in your airways to stimulate them, to cause the muscles to contract. They, these particles also interact with the immune cells in your airways to cause the release of inflammatory mediators or chemicals to cause inflammation. And it also increases what we call asthmatic inflammation. And the end result is that you have all these inflammatory chemicals being produced. You have the sensory nerves telling the muscles to tighten. The inflammatory chemicals swell that breathing tube and also increase the mucus. And what we have then is what we call bronchoconstriction, basically tightening of that airway tube. And then all this inflammation and swelling also makes the airway more reactive to other triggers. So if you're exposed to air pollution and it's causing some asthma in you and airway inflammation, that inflammation makes you much more likely to respond to lower doses of other triggers like pollens or even respiratory infections. Children are very vulnerable to air pollution, and there's a variety of reasons for this. First of all, they breathe at a much more rapid rate than us. Infants breathe three times faster, toddlers and preschoolers twice as fast. So that means they're moving in that much more air than we are. They also, if you would take their lungs and spread them all out, dissect them and spread them out, they have a much larger lung surface area. That inside lining of their lungs compared to their body size is very much larger than what ours is. Children in general spend a 10 more, spend more time outdoors with vigorous physical activity. And again, that's going to increase how fast they're breathing. activity, and again, that's going to increase how fast they're breathing, and that's going to bring them breathing more air with pollution. The other thing that's important to remember is that with children, their lungs are still developing. They haven't reached their full adult size, and I'll show you some data a bit later on that air pollution actually decreases lung development in children, and it can impact them not achieving full lung development as adults. So what are the effects of air pollution on asthma? And these are all taken from those integrated scientific assessments from the EPA. Short-term PM 2.5 pollution, and short-term again is ours today's, is known to cause decreased lung function, increased asthma symptoms, and rescue medication use. That means the inhaler they use when they're having an attack. It's also been shown to increase emergency room business for asthma as well as hospitalizations. Long-term exposure to PM 2.5, which is months to years of exposure, has been shown to decrease lung function as well as lung growth in these children, and it increases their risk of asthma. Short-term exposure to sulfur dioxide, SO2, decreases lung function, increases asthma symptoms, increases asthma outpatient business, asthma emergency room business, and asthma Again, looking at the NO2 effects on asthma, the EPA Integrated Science Assessment, short-term NO2 exposure decreases lung function, increases emergency room business and hospitalizations for asthma, and the long-term NO2 exposure decreases lung function, lung growth in children, and increases their risk of asthma. So I recently published, it was in November of 2020, I published in a peer-reviewed journal, a recent study that I conducted, and that means that the study was reviewed by other scientists in the area and deemed worthy of publication because it had important results in, and the results were found to be valid. What we did was we looked at the impact of outdoor air pollution on childhood asthma in Allegheny County. We focused on enrolling disparate children. We enrolled 1,200 children who reside near point sources of outdoor air pollution. These sites included the Clerkin Coke Works. The nearest one right now to us would be the Braddock Steel Mill. We also included the Turnpike Junction in Monroeville. We also looked at the north, one of the northern school districts that is just north of Neville Island, where Shenango Coke Facility had closed several years ago, and this was before closure. And we also looked at children residing near the power plant, the coal-fired power plant in Cheswick. So we enrolled 1,200 children that lived near these point sources of pollution. Forty-nine percent of them were male, a high percentage, 52%, were African American, and 61% were on public health insurance, and that's what we used as a indicator of lower socioeconomic status. Half of these children were from the Woodland Hills School District. 600 kids from Woodland Hills participated. 63% of those were African American children, and the map is just showing you the district, you know, geography that Ms. Ray alluded to earlier. We also looked at air pollution exposure. We didn't rely just on the fixed monitors, you know, that are used by the county to collect the data for the EPA. We actually used a very sophisticated land use regression model that was developed by our colleagues at Carnegie Mellon University. And basically, what they have is a mobile van that's fully equipped with all types of chemical, of equipment to measure the chemicals in the air. So what they do is they drive this van around Allegheny County in different temperatures and, you know, different seasons, and they actually measure down to the street address what somebody's pollution exposure is. We're not looking at what the pollution exposure was for these children nearest their home by the county monitor or nearest their school by the county monitor. We're looking at this land use regression model that tells us what their exposure was right at their home address. The median distance these children lived from the site of the pollution was 1.6 miles. Forty percent of the children who participated in the study had PM 2.5 exposure above the current EPA standard of 12. Forty percent are exposed to more than where they're allowed to be exposed to via the EPA standards. The World Health Organization has already lowered their standards, as has Canada, and they've actually already lowered their limits down to 10 micrograms per meter cube. If we look at that, 70% of the children who participated in this study were exposed to PM 2.5 levels above that World Health Organization standard. We looked at the nitric oxide species, and we divided them into quartiles. What that means is we just divided them based on the lowest fourth, the middle half, and then the upper fourth of them, and we did the same thing with the sulfur exposures as well. We looked at quartile production there. We found an overall asthma prevalence of 22.5% among these children. That's very high. The state and national prevalence rates are 8 to 10%. The overall county rate is about 10%. The county health department has collected data on African American and poorer, poorer adults, and have shown that African American adults and lower socioeconomic status adults do have an asthma prevalence of around 20 to 25%. And in conjunction with Children's Hospital, the health department has also done some work with African American teens in our county, showing a very similar rate of asthma among those African Americans, teens of about 20 to 25%. So what we're doing is seeing a high rate of asthma prevalence, much higher than expected, and we were able to analyze this data and look to see if the air pollution exposure increased odds of asthma diagnosis. Now, there's a few other things that increase your likelihood of having asthma. Being a boy versus being a girl always have much higher rates of asthma. African Americans have higher rates than white people, and poorer people have higher rates of asthma than wealthier people. So in our analysis, we're able to control for those known factors, and we try to isolate out what else is contributing to these trends. We found a 1.6x increase in asthma diagnosis with PM 2.5 greater than 10 micrograms per meter cubed. Again, we used that World Health Organization threshold. We found a 2.4x increase if the children were exposed to nitrogen oxide species, if they were in that upper quartile of exposure, and if they were obese. So there's some things that interact. Asthma is not one thing necessarily causing the disease. A lot of these things can interact. Again, like pollens and respiratory infections, as well as air pollution, we're looking also at obesity. Tobacco smoke is another one. We found a 1.8x increase with sulfur exposure in that top quartile in the poorer children, those who were on public health insurance. We also looked at what we call uncontrolled asthma. So patients who have asthma can have either controlled or uncontrolled asthma. Controlled asthma means that you have the disease, we can't cure it, but you're able to control it so that you can run and play and function and have a normal life. We typically will, you know, gain control of asthma by instituting environmental controls where we decrease their exposure to known triggers, and we can also use medications to decrease that airway inflammation. Uncontrolled asthma means the patients are having lots of breakthrough asthma symptoms. They're having to use their rescue inhaler because they're having attacks, they're waking up at night because they're having problem, they're missing school or work, they're not able to participate in sports, they're going to the emergency room, their primary care doctors for asthma attacks are even being admitted. We found that in the children in our study who had documented asthma, 270 of them had documented asthma, we found that 59.3% were uncontrolled. So that means they're having very frequent symptoms during the day and at night, having impacts on school, needing medical care and not participating in activities. This is double the state prevalence of uncontrolled asthma, which is at 27%. And again, we know that males have, you know, more uncontrolled asthma, African Americans have more uncontrolled asthma, poorer people have more uncontrolled asthma. We controlled for those things, and we found that in females, exposure to PM 2.5 greater than 10 micrograms per meter cubed, again, that World Health Organization standard, caused a 5x increase in the rate of uncontrolled asthma. So the conclusions were that we have high rates of asthma and poor disease control among these disparate children, and they're disparate because they're predominantly African American and poor, and they're exposed to high levels of air pollution. I showed you that 70% of them are exposed to levels above the World Health Organization and 40% above the EPA. And again, these results are similar to those reported by the Allegheny County Health Department for both adults that are African American as well as teens, and this problem isn't unique to our city. It's been reported in other cities, and we'll talk about that more with the environmental justice. The minorities and the poorer people tend to live nearer to, nearer to the point sources of pollution, and they have higher exposure, and we tend to see this across different cities. These results really underscore the need for primary prevention of disease, and what does that mean? That means instead of saying, hey, you have asthma, here's your inhalers to take for the rest of your life, it means trying to prevent the problem from happening, trying to prevent exposure to known triggers. And again, those triggers are things such as air pollution, respiratory infections, allergens, tobacco smoke, even obesity and being overweight are now linked now. You know, again, these numbers are very high. We're looking at 2 to 3x the rate of asthma in these disparate children living near these point sources of pollution. Half of the children in the study came from the Woodland Hills School District, and we also showed that the level of control was much worse in these children. Their, their rate of being uncontrolled is twice as high as what we expected, and these results really underscored a need to reduce the exposure to outdoor air pollution, particularly in these disparate populations that are high-risk, again, African Americans and poorer people. I'm not going to go through this. I'm, I'm not an expert on these other diseases, but I know a lot about this just because of my work with air pollution. But there are other impacts of outdoor air pollution on health. There are many vulnerable populations, and if you think about this, these are people we define as being vulnerable to air pollution. Pregnant women, children, elderly, anyone with underlying health conditions like respiratory or cardiac problems. We all know people like this. Vulnerable populations also include minorities and the poor. I didn't focus it all on some of the other pollutants. It's not, they're not important. Again, most of my work has focused more on the sulfur dioxide and the PM 2.5. But again, we're already called for tomorrow to be a high ozone day. We've seen several of those over the summer, and we're seeing increased numbers of ozone days as we're experiencing climate change, and that's going to keep happening. We also, earlier, about a month ago, were experiencing pollution that was coming from these distant wildfires. It was very hazy out there for three days. We had very high pollution levels. So it's not only was here locally, but it's what else we're exposed to. There's widespread health impacts in Allegheny County with other diseases. Sandra had mentioned some of these. My colleagues at Pitt and CMU have researched these and reported them in the medical literature. It's documented that there's increased mortality due to air pollution in our county, increased cancer, increased cardiac, respiratory, and birth outcome issues related to PM 2.5 pollution in our county. And certainly, we're still in this COVID epidemic, and we know that there's synergism between air pollution and other triggers. This is very well established, and that includes respiratory viruses, including COVID-19. A very well-respected researcher published last year that COVID-19 mortality, your likelihood of dying from COVID-19 increases 8% with each 1 microgram per meter cubed increase in your long-term exposure to PM 2.5. So you can't think of these things just in isolation, you have to think of them with all the other factors. Ruthie went through this quite a bit, environmental justice, so I'm going to just, you know, just briefly mention it and then go into the data. Again, this comes from the US, US EPA, and it's supposed to be the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, and it's supposed to be achieved when everyone has the same degree of protection from environmental and health hazards, and they actually are supposed to have equal access to the decision-making processes.
Ms. Laba, I mean, object, place another objection. This is, again, irrelevant.
Mr. Gagarin, I'm going to rule the objection, but I will ask the witnesses, you know, I think Dr. Gentile, you did say, well, this has already been covered, and you didn't, weren't really adding much. If we could just kind of stick to your, your testimony, what you're adding, that would be helpful.
Okay, sure. Sure, sure. I'm going to just briefly tell you about the environmental justice areas. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, this is how they define environmental justice areas. Ms. Ray went through that. There are several recent studies that are referenced below, and they're included in the exhibits. They actually show that minorities and poor do bear, do bear disproportionate burdens related to air pollution. There's a 1.35x increased burden among the poor related to disparities with air pollution, and a 1.54% increased burden in African Americans. And there's another study recently that shows there's inequity in what they call consumptions of goods and services due to air pollution. And what this means is that the whites, and the whites tend to live away from this point sources of air pollution, but the African Americans live near them. And even though over time the air pollution levels are going down, it's happening more in the white neighborhoods than it is in the black. She talked a bit about this, this ring of 2 miles around the proposed site, a population of over 44,000 people. It's close proximity to the Woodland Hills High School, as well as to Pace School. Those are both a half a mile away, very, very close, and the Trinity Christian School is 1.2 miles away, and Wilkins School is also very close. I'm going to just talk a bit about this more. I know she mentioned it, but I just want to point out some other additional things on it. You can go into this, and it's showing you how African Americans and poorer people bear this disproportionate burden of air pollution. If you go into our 2-mile diameter, our 2-mile radius around this proposed site, the PM 2.5 value is 11, and that's well above the state average of 9.3, and that puts us at the 98th percentile highest in the state. That's the 98th percentile highest for pollution. We're also high for our EPA region in the mid-Atlantic, and then we're high across the US also. The diesel PM is shown, we're high for all three things again. The same with traffic proximity and volume. We're up around the 80th percentile. That means we're 80% of the other communities are better off than we are. If you look at the people of color, and again, those are more likely to bear the burden and to have health effects, 51% of the population in this area is African American, and that's much higher than you see across the other comparison regions. The low-income population isn't as bad as 32% here, 29 across the state, you know, 27 for the region, and 33 across the US. So then when you, the, this site will actually take all the data, the pollution data, as well as the demographic data, including race, as well as poverty status, and they rank it, and Ruthie went over this already. We ranked very poorly for PM 2.5 for the Environmental Justice Index for diesel, traffic proximity and volume, and they also looked at diseases, including respiratory diseases and cancer risk, and we ranked very poorly for those. Again, the best number would be 0, the worst number would be 100, we're at 80. So again, just to summarize, we have this 2-mile ring with proposed, you know, the contained, with this proposed site containing EJ areas. They already have high exposures and high EJ indexes at the baseline, and those were PM 2.5, the diesel PM, and traffic proximity and volume, and we already have high EJ indices for respiratory index and cancer risk at baseline without anything. without anything being added. So these, the conclusion basically is we already have high levels of pollution and we already have adverse health effects due to them. This was already presented, but I do want to, you know, point out the scientific publication where it was presented. Basically, it's recognized that the current EPA standard for PM 2.5 are not adequate. As I said, the World Health Organization in Canada have also tightened theirs up already. And the panel that was convened under the prior administration wanted to see this level decrease to eight to 10. And that panel was being reconvened and that's being re-investigated. So it's very likely that the standard is going to drop from 12 down to 8.10. And the short-term exposure is also likely to drop from 35 down to 25 to 30. And again, if you would just drop, if we dropped our national level from 12 down to nine microgram per meter cubed, it's estimated to save 21 to 27% of the lives that are lost due to air pollution each year. This is the air pollution modeling report for the proposed site from Epsilon Associates. I just put it in there so we can put things in relationship. They use the monitoring data from the Health Department monitors. The Parkway East Monitor is almost a mile away from the site and the North Rad Monitor's three miles. So there's potential to really underestimate the exposure of residents living in closer proximity to these sites. The baseline PM 2.5 is 10.6. The estimated site level is 0.39. That puts us at a total of 11. The current, the current threshold set by the EPA is 12, but it's likely to go down to eight to 10 in the next several years. And that puts us, we're 90, we're at 90, right now, 92%. We're 90, we're, the pollution estimated from all this will be 92% of what's allowed. And that's not taking into consideration if this threshold drops. The SO2, we're very high to the limit already. We're at 166 and that's 85% of what's allowed. We will be very close, you know, closer if this happens. The nitrogen dioxide, the baseline level is 68. It's allowed to be 188, so it's reasonable. But it's going to increase 2.3 times based on this estimate. It's going to go from a low level up to a high level, which is 85% of what's allowed. So I just wanted to point those things out. I did look at the literature. This is relevant. There are several studies that have been published looking at the impact of a large delivery warehouse on traffic, air pollution and noise. And these are basically natural experiments. And the first one, and again, both of these are submitted as exhibits. In the first one, a large delivery warehouse opened in a low-income New York City neighborhood. And that neighborhood already accommodated industrial facilities in the interstates. That neighborhood's baseline annual PM 2.5 was 8.6, which is much less than ours. And it was lower than that for all of New York City. All of New York City was only 7.5. They studied eight sites before and after opening. And after it opened, they found that truck traffic increased significantly, particularly at night. One site had a 32% increase in truck traffic from 9:00 PM to 12:00 AM that wasn't anticipated. And there was actually a site that wasn't included in the environmental assessment that also had increased truck traffic. They also modeled it based on this increased traffic. There were small increases in the air pollution and noise levels. And their conclusion was that small increases are of concern in an EJ community because they're seeking to decrease their air pollution exposure. The focus should be on decreasing traffic and pollution in these EJ areas. The next slide is about warehouses, air pollution and social disparities across Southern California. There's over 3,000 large warehouses in Southern California. That area ranks 86th percentile worse for state levels of toxic emissions. There's 450 warehouses located in the top 10% of the worst census tracts for traffic pollution. Within a half-mile of a warehouse, 85% of the residents are people of color. And that's much higher than the state rate is 65%. And there's actually 640 schools. And again, the children are vulnerable. In this study, the warehouses and truck traffic pollution correlated with bad air quality as well as related health problems. And again, disproportionately affected the people of color. They also did a look and showed that the majority of the warehouses were located in the areas where the least amount of online shopping is happening. And so what that's showing again is that disproportionate burden of, you know, the air pollution. People of color and lower socioeconomic status aren't utilizing these things. And then the white, more wealthy people are benefiting from them and they aren't, the white people aren't suffering from the effects while the African Americans are. Overall conclusion, the community surrounding the proposed site, it contains EJ areas with very vulnerable residents. It currently has high levels of air pollution and related adverse health effects. And the goal should be to protect residents by lowering air pollution exposure. The specific site concerns, the PM 2.5 and SO2 levels are already near maximal allowable levels with no room to accommodate increases. The NO2 levels are modeled to increase 2.3 times. Also, those distal monitors are likely to underestimate the exposure of residents living in closer proximity than those monitors. Also, the current EPA limits for PM 2.5 are inadequate to protect health. And it's expected that those limits will decrease down to eight to 10 microgram per meter cubed. And then there's also, again, I reviewed the recent reports of disparate impact of warehouses in local communities. And really, that underscores the potential impact of the proposed site on the surrounding community. And then with that, I'll end. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gentile. We are almost exactly at the, our standard eight o'clock breakpoint. I see Ms. Klein has her hand raised and we certainly will give her an opportunity to ask cross-examination questions after the applicant. But at this point, we'll go ahead, give the court reporter a little bit, little bit of a break and we'll, we'll check back in at 10 after eight o'clock. Thanks, folks. Alex, let me know when counsel there is ready to start back up again.
We're all ready. We're ready to start.
Fantastic. I was giving you an extra minute or two, but I know this counsel is ready to go. All right, Kim, how about you? You ready? All right, great. Okay, we're going to go back on the record. And where we left off, I believe Dr. Gentile had just completed her testimony on direct from, on behalf of Ms. Ray. And we were going to turn it over to Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Metz for the initial crack at a cross-examination they may have.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Dr. Gentile, I have just a few questions for you. In Allegheny County, the Allegheny County Health Department is the agency responsible for regulating air pollution, correct?
You are, Dr. Gentile, you're muted.
Sarah, that's better. Sorry about that. Yes, to the best of my knowledge, the Allegheny County Health Department is in charge of regulating air quality.
Okay. Okay, and if there were air pollution, there are air pollution emission levels, which you have referenced in your report, that the proposed emissions from the distribution facility do not exceed the NAC levels that would require an air quality permit for this facility. Is that correct?
That's not my area of expertise to know what needs an air quality permit.
Okay, that's good enough. Thank you. So on page 29, your conclusions seem to be based upon a study dated March 23, 2021. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Paige. What's the, what are you reading on the top of what the page you said 29?
Air Pollution, Air Pollution Modeling Report for Proposed Site.
Yes.
Okay, and are you aware that there is a new study that is dated August 2nd?
No, I don't have that new study.
Okay, so your, your report and your testimony is to outdated, an outdated model, correct?
I don't know. I would say as outdated, it's only been two weeks in his summer and I, you know, obviously was on vacation, so I can't be, you know, I can certainly review it and retestify if you like.
No, that's, that's quite all right. Thank you. We have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Ferguson, I think I see your hand raised and I promised to give you first crack as the legal counsel, so if you could go ahead and ask any questions for Dr. Gentile.
Sure, however, Ms., this is Ms. Ray's witness, and I see that she has her hand raised. I was wondering if she, I guess she can redirect after the cross.
Correct.
I do. Okay. Dr. Gentile, do you have an opinion as to whether or not the proposed distribution warehouse will decrease air quality in the borough of Churchill?
There is no way it's going to decrease air quality. All it can do is increase it. You're going to have diesel trucks coming in. You're going to have employees commuting in there. There's no way it's going to decrease it.
I'm confused by your response. Maybe you're not understanding. So I'm, I'm asking if, not if it will decrease air pollution, but will the proposed warehouse decrease the air quality?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, my expert opinion is it will decrease air quality. We already have poor air quality. You're going to have more emissions, so you're going to have poorer air quality.
Do you have an opinion as to whether or not the proposed distribution warehouse will have a detrimental impact on surrounding residential properties and their occupants by a decrease in air quality?
Yes, my expert opinion would be that patients, not patients, but residents nearby that are exposed to increased air pollution, or as you say, decreased air quality, will have increased health effects. As well documented, that the pollution can actually cause asthma problems, other respiratory problems, cardiac problems, mortality, even dementia.
Are you aware, based upon the study that you reviewed, of any actions or any measures which are proposed by the distribution warehouse facility that would mitigate the, its pollution so as not to decrease the air quality?
I'm not aware of any.
Do you have an opinion as to whether or not this decrease in air quality will be particularly harmful to persons who are in environmental justice areas, specifically including persons who are minorities or poor?
Yes, the evidence is clear that those patients, the minorities and the poor people in the environmental justice areas are more impacted. The literature supports that. My own research supports it.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Alex, who's next on our cross-examination list? I think it looks like it's Ms. Klein. If you could unmute her on the phone. We had you there for a second, Ms. Klein. Hold on. We'll give another try. All right, got.
Okay, thank you, Gavin. I have a question for Dr. Gentile. I listened with great interest to your expert testimony regarding childhood asthma and air pollution. And as I listen to everybody's testimony tonight, I'm trying to tie the comments to the zoning code and how it applies to the conditional use application that counsel will be voting on. So my question is, did you intend that the thorough testimony that you gave to us, that this would prove that the applicant's conditional use application did not meet the criteria listed in Churchill's zoning code, Section 304-31, Section 3, which states the proposed-
Objection. Ms. Klein, asking, asking the witness to testify as to the ultimate conclusion of, of counsel as to whether or not the application meets the ordinance is not an appropriate question. You need to really focus on the area of testimony, which doctor, and I think I've heard four different pronunciations.
It's Gentile, but I'll answer anyway. I've heard them all before, too.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Gentile. So I'm sorry, Ms. Klein, if you could rephrase that or reframe that question possibly?
Gavin, I'm sorry. I was just trying to, in my mind, determine if her testimony was in relation to the conditional use application. And if it's not appropriate for me to ask that question, I will just rescind that question. I'm just trying to logically sort through the procedure. It was, in my mind, I thought all testimony had to refer to conditional use application criteria, and so that's why I was asking that question. So I apologize if that is out of line. Thank you.
No, no, that's okay. And I, I may not have been as clear as I probably should have been. So, you know, the ultimate determination as to whether or not it should be approved, really, it's not appropriate for this witness to testify to. But certainly, if, I think she's already testified, frankly, that Dr. Gentile, that, that she feels like there will be a detrimental impact to residents, because that was in response to a question by Mr. Ferguson. But if you have another question, you know, related to the air quality and her, her review of the air quality study and her testimony, that would be appropriate.
No, thank you. Not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Klein. Alex, I see Ms. Ray, and we'll go back to her for redirect if she has anything. But do we have any other cross-examination from party objectors?
None that I see.
I'm seeing Ms. Darrett.
Do you want to have counsel address, or do you want to go to Ms. Darrett?
Let's go to Ms. Darrett, and then we can go to counsel before we go back to Ms. Ray.
Hi, this, sorry. Sorry, this, this question is for Dr. Gentile. I, I can see that you studied impacts of air quality on environmental justice communities. Do you know anything about the effects of trees and green space on air quality and the relationship to environmental justice communities?
Yeah, there's a lot less literature on that. You know, there, there is a lot of knowledge that trees are healthy for the environment. They help to filter out pollution. They also, you know, provide an activity area for people to be out in the green and physically exercise and, you know, emotionally feel better. But as far as hardcore science, there's not a lot of it. There is data that shows, you know, that you can calculate how much air pollution is going to be removed from the air by trees. I think in general, people believe trees are beneficial to the environment and health, but there's not clear-cut studies on that right now with each disease.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darrett. Before we go back to Ms. Ray for redirect, I'm sorry, it's like we might have another, okay, that's it. Any questions from counsel?
Yes, Councilmember Matt Costilla. During your testimony, I guess, one of the questions I had is you presented some information, I guess, on the, the increase of asthma. Do you have that data available in map form, you know, showing, I guess, kind of clustered by geographic region at all?
The manuscript that was submitted, the published paper of that does have a map in there of the schools that participated.
Yeah, but I mean, not just the schools, but the actual patient home location, you know, that would show.
No, I just, I, yeah, we couldn't plot all that out. There's 1,200 patients. We do, we do state what the average distance from the sources are, as well as the median distances.
Okay, great, because that leads into my next question. In your research, were you able to identify either a single or major sources based on proximity that were causing these increases?
Oh, yeah, we actually, the closer you live to the point sources under study, the higher your prevalence rates were, as well as your exposure to pollutants.
So was, would you identify like one or two major point sources that had the largest increase and what they were for us?
Clerken Coke Works, Edgar Thompson Still Mill, Turnpike Junction.
Okay. Okay, and then in your slide, I don't know if you can bring your presentation back up on the screen?
Yep.
I think it was slide, I'm going to guess 29 or 30, about the, you presented on, you know, I think it was some information that was published on a kind of an after project of a warehouse that was installed.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could bring that up.
So there's two here. One is a small study looking at the warehouse that was built in New York City. And then the other one is the, the report of, yes.
Specifically, the, the last slide with the New York City one.
Oh, okay, sure.
So I guess my question here is, you know, I see that you mentioned increase in traffic, but was, was there any, I guess, do you have information on what the modeled, you know, and modeling that was done for this project, PM2 was, you know, I see the baseline of seven or eight point six in that area, but what was the actual after the building and what was it, you know, modeled to be? Do you have any of that information available?
You know, it may be right in the paper. I don't recall what it was modeled to be. The modeled, the modeled increase after it was built, I believe it was, was a small, small amount. But I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to go back in that and look.
Okay, that just kind of caught me, because, you know, I think we focused a lot on PM2, but it looks like the, you know, the conclusions talked more about traffic. So, thank you.
Just, just so everyone's clear, traffic pollution is a component of PM2.5.
Certainly, thank you.
Thanks, doctor. If you could stop sharing your screen now, we can turn it over to Ms. Ray. And if there's any redirect questions, Ms. Ray, you don't, certainly are not obligated to ask them, but this is your opportunity to do so.
Yes, I have two, but what I'd like to do first is ensure that the exhibits that Dr. Gentile is referencing and that Councilmember Costiglia is speaking about are exhibits. So it's Exhibit F, Exhibit G, and Exhibit H. And I would want to ensure that those, those articles and those exhibits are entered into the record.
Yes, they, I do, I'm on the website now as we speak, and I'm seeing that there's a 18-page report regarding the larger delivery warehouse in the South Bronx. And I'm just going to work under the assumption that the other two are there, too, and if it turns out there's a problem, we'll certainly get copies from you to make sure that that website's updated.
All right, all right. So to my question for Dr. Gentile, is your testimony based on current science and medical research?
Yes.
And then my last question, do you believe increased levels of PM2.5 will cause a dangerous or injurious condition for residents?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Is there any recross, Mr. Gallagher?
No, Mr. Rob. However, you know, going to our earlier discussion with regard to objections to lay testimony, we have not had the opportunity to review any exhibits, so we would like to be able to reserve that same objection after the hearing.
Certainly. I mean, I think, I think there are a number of these that, that are posted or had, I think, have been posted online, but, but recognizing that you have a rebuttal case as well where you could address those exhibits will certainly, certainly give you that opportunity.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other recross for Dr. Gentile, or are we going to set her free for the evening?
My husband will be happy.
You know what?
He thanks you.
You're not, you're not quite out of the woods yet, Dr. Gentile. I see, I do see one more hand.
We spoke to you soon.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Ms. Pellegrini, we can go ahead and unmute Ms. Pellegrini and see if she has a question?
Yes, hi. Thank you, Dr. Gentile, for your testimony. I just wondered, kind of following on from Ms. Ray's question, and you noted that there's, this is based on current science and research. For somebody who would, who would be moving into the area post approval of this project, how, what advice would you, would you give them? Would you recommend the area or not?
Yeah.
Based on what you think? If they had a precondition.
We're getting some bad feedback, Ms. Pellegrini. I'm not sure if it's on our end or yours, but I am going to sustain that objection. You know, that's not, that's not relevant to counsel's consideration of the application before them. So if you could maybe ask that question a different way, if you're trying to get information. Maybe, maybe it's not possible. I'm not sure.
I'm thinking. I think I'll just withdraw at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pellegrini. All right. Dr. Gentile, get out of here before we start asking you another question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you, if you need any follow-up, I'm happy to help. I appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate the due diligence you're taking.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Ray, do you have any other witnesses?
I just would, you know, like to have Cynthia Underwood be the next speaker. She is, she is a party objector, and she is going to continue.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. We have our list we'll be working from. It just so happens that Ms. Underwood is next on the list, so.
All right, thank you.
We will, we'll move on to her. Alex, we bring Ms. Underwood up to the spotlight.
So unmute herself and begin to speak.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Gavin. Thank you for everyone for hearing me today. My name is Cynthia Underwood, and I reside at 824 Graham Boulevard, Pittsburgh, PA 15221, which is less than a mile from the Greensburg Pike exit or entrance ramp to the former Westinghouse site. I am a retired special agent from the IRS Criminal Investigation, and I have resided with my two daughters in Churchill Borough for the last seven years. And I am speaking tonight as a voice, as one who is adjacent to this proposed site and directly on the proposed route that goes from Greensburg Pike onto Graham and then on to William Penn Highway and then on to the Parkway East entrance ramp. I am also, as Ms. Ray spoke of, Rankin, I am a native of Rankin, the borough of Rankin, born and raised there with four other siblings, and my parents and family, some of my family members still reside there today. I grew up in Rankin, also in Swissfell, in the surrounding Wand Valley areas. Excuse me, I graduated from Woodley Hills after it merged in 1984, so I'm very familiar with this area. Having grown up in Rankin, I am also- Having grown up in Rankin, I am also I've also had the opportunity to experience the Kerry Furnace and Edgar Thompson Steel Works and the air pollution that these facilities spewed on our communities. I often remember my mother hanging out freshly laundered clothing and how the soot from these facilities would blacken the laundry, as well as the vehicles in the area. In hindsight and after listening to testimony tonight, I realized that I've been predisposed to some of these things that Dr. Gentile just spoke of regarding asthma and some of the other health concerns. I've also had occasion to live in other parts of Pittsburgh and the surrounding areas to include Wilkinsburg, the Manchester area, the North Shore, and also in the Shellfont area, which is not too far from this proposed site. And I've had the opportunity, myself and my children, to experience what makes Pittsburgh so special, and that's the unique qualities of each neighborhood and their own character and identity. As a layperson, I, these reports that I've read and in the observing, all the witnesses and the experts, I have no no expertise in any of these areas. I can only speak from what I've observed and seen from my living in this borough. Can we ask ourselves and the applicant, what is the social responsibility of a large corporation toward the neighborhood, neighborhoods or communities in which they embed themselves? We've heard about promises of well-paying jobs and bright futures, but what happens to our generations down the road after these large corporations decide that they no longer have use for our communities? In the viewing of past meetings, as well as the Churchill Borough visioning process, I've noticed that a lot of the experts that they called upon spoke of having a mixed-use space, a space that enhances human well-being, a space that's walkable by the residents in that community, a space that has connectivity and allows residents and those that come to this area to engage with one another. And looking back in my growing up in the Rankin area, my family and I decided to form an investment group in order to help the blighted communities of Rankin and Bradock, we've decided to rehab properties and give back to those communities. Our vision is to see a new avenue in Bradock and in those community that has shops, stores, coffee shops, much like the neighborhoods of Lawrenceville, Shady Side. Why can't we have these things in our community? Why is this site only going to go to one user when it can go to multiple users? So question, what is it that would draw future families and future generations to our borough after this facility is erected? I can't foresee having a large distribution center as being a large draw for someone to raise their family around, and especially after hearing all the reports about the air quality and the pollution and the sound and the noise effects of what this plant will bring to our area. To say that I have become very disturbed and concerned about what I've been learning and observing about this project is an understatement. As I've sat in on some of this testimony and revisited some of the recordings online, it has become apparent that we, the residents, have just become part of the collateral damage that will occur if this project is permitted to move forward. I have heard talk of noise studies, traffic studies, water studies, and wow, it is as if the residents and this family, the families here are just the residual part of this whole process. I've heard some of my fellow residents speak of their concern of additional traffic and vehicles that will be placed on our roads if this project is permitted. The response to these concerns throughout the presentation have been, steps have been taken to minimize and mitigate. But how do you mitigate what is already reported as high levels of air pollutants? And how do you mitigate all the additional vehicles that will be placed upon our roads if this plant is operating 24/7? I'm very concerned about being directly on the route from Greensburg Pike to Graham Boulevard. I have enjoyed taking walks with my daughters and exploring our community. I've watched other residents as they walk, run, take their kids for a stroll. And all of these things will be greatly diminished with the increased traffic, the increased diesel emissions, and all the sounds that will come from this plant operating 24 hours a day. This proposed distribution center is in direct violation of Article 1, Section 27 of the Constitution of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Natural Resources and the Public Estate. And then, and I think someone else may have quoted it, but it in essence says that we have a right to clean air, pure water, preservation of natural scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of our environment. This proposal also does not align with Article or Chapter 304, Conditional Use Criteria, Section 304-31C, which states that the proposal shall not involve any element or cause any condition that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any property or persons, and shall comply with the performance standards of 304-23. And in listening to the testimony again, I can understand if there's over 600 vehicles traveling over our roads, 1,000 to 1,500 employees per day, going back and forth from this site, how that cannot be noxious, noxious or injurious to us with the air quality and the sound quality. Both of my children have suffered from asthma and had to be given breathing treatments in their younger years. They both suffer from allergies, but in spite of this, we have enjoyed walking, running, and biking in our borough. I'm very concerned about my children and our fellow residents based upon what I've been hearing about the diesel exhaust and the resulting impact on our quality of life in this borough. I have debated prior to even taking part in this process on moving from Churchill Borough. However, with a child preparing to attend college in the fall, this is not financially feasible at this time. So basically, I will be forced to partake in this proposal being approved because I, I actually love being in this borough and financially, it would not be a good thing for me to move at this time. I observed some of the traffic study testimony and some of the questions from some of my fellow residents. And one question that really was interesting was when one of the resident asked the expert about what they deemed to be a significant impact. The traffic study expert told us that they are required to mitigate traffic impacts at the study area intersections. And only if they exceed an overall increase of 10-second delays or more with the proposed improvements they addressed, and that they had met all the mitigation and minimal impacts. My question to that expert is, if you didn't measure the routes in between the intersections, how does that bear on us who are in those areas? So basically, we're not deemed significant for purposes of the study. Based upon my personal observations during walks and listening to the testimony, very little 18-wheeler truck or long box trucks, or however they describe them, have been observed. We see lawn care trucks, landscaping trucks, delivery trucks, vehicles. But at 7:00 PM on most days, there is very little traffic. There's very little traffic sound. So I proposed to the council, how could a truck running every two minutes, as was decided on one of your meetings, that 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 wouldn't be a significant impact on us? I don't think that the applicant is looking at what our neighborhood truly needs. I think they're looking at their bottom-line needs and that their bottom-line needs is more important that people buy and people get their packages faster. One conclusion, I asked the borough to consider all that the previous witnesses and any other witness, what they are saying. I think that we have to look more at what our residents need, want, and desire. After working almost 30 years in the federal government and having reached this place in my life, I don't think that a decision to move from this borough is one that should be forced upon me at this time for the sake of a corporation wanting to expand its footprint across our country. That being said, I would ask the Borough Council to say no to this project and to revisit the C1 District Visioning Plan dated August 2020. With that being said, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Metz, any cross-examination?
No, Mr. Rob.
Okay. Are there any other party objectors who wish to cross-examine Ms. Underwood before we move to council? We'll give it just about 10 seconds here. Alex, you seeing anyone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Borough Council? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Underwood, looks like there'll be no cross-examination. Thank you for your testimony tonight.
Thank you, Gavin.
Sure. Okay, next on the list was Ms. Covington Ward. Alex, I know you received an email from Ms. Covington Ward. We will just give her just a moment here in case she's changed her mind and wants to continue to participate as a party objector. Not, we'll go ahead and she can plan on testifying during public comment. The next person I have on my list is Mr. James, Jim DePerna. Mr. DePerna, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself and we'll go ahead and listen to your testimony.
Yeah, hi. My name is James DePerna. I don't know if my picture's coming through to you folks or not.
We don't, we don't see your picture, but we can hear you.
Okay, how do I, can I, if I hit video, will that give you a picture?
That's most likely to give us a picture.
Let me, let me do that, and I don't know if that's gonna work or not here. Wonderful machines.
Unless you, unless you put on your white blob costume, Jim, I think we're just gonna have to listen to you.
Yeah, yeah, this is not working.
That's okay. Why don't you go ahead?
All right, well, my name is James DePerna. I live at 1616 Branding Road, which is the street that, or it goes off of Churchill Road here, which, and of course Churchill runs directly to the Hillwood site. And my concern here is well, let me give you a little of my background. I'm a registered professional engineer and a fellow and honorary member of the American Society of Mechanical Engineers. And I've been a consultant pretty much my entire working career on various projects. Also have been, since I was, grew up here in Swissville, I've also been active in, in in trying to maintain older communities, which I have admired and have lived in for the last, no, almost my entire life now, and it's a and I have observed that when communities start to decline, as they have here in the Mon Valley, of course, this was due to population loss when the steel industry died, but a big, that the housing stock, if it isn't maintained, the community seemed to go downhill quickly. And as a result of that, I, I have been very active in zoning applications for these older communities I've lived in, like Swissville. I grew up, like I say, I was raised in Swissville and I was and I was also active when I got older in the development of the Swissville zoning ordinance as I became chairman of their, of the Swissville Planning Commission. And the intent was to try to preserve the housing stock and the, and the long-term development through a little urban renewal program that would have maintained, hopefully maintained, Swissville for the future. I also then lived in Edgewood, and I was also active on developing and applying the zoning ordinance in Edgewood, which is also an older community and did need to, but also emphasize housing stock improvement and retention. And it did. We did do that, and when the proposal came for the development of the Westinghouse Air Brake Site, which was about 40 acres split between Swissville and Edgewood, I was active in developing that site, and I voted for that when I was on Edgewood Council. Now, but I live in Churchill, as I'm up in the years and in my doughy chair. I am impressed, I was impressed by Churchill as a community with a history of of stable stability and maintain, maintenance of its housing stock. And but, and a lot of that, I think, is due to having a very efficient zoning ordinance and zoning code enforcement. However, I am concerned that with the the change in the zoning ordinance to accommodate the hill, the hill development.
Mr. Rob, I have placed a relevancy objection to whatever this line of testimony is. It seems to be more of free-form opinion or editorializing about zoning effects and his experience in other municipalities that aren't, do not apply to this site or to the application criteria and.
Well, if you let me. Mr. DePerna, let me, let me respond to that, Mr. DePerna. I, you know, to the extent that you are, I believe you submitted something in writing, correct me if I'm wrong, related to.
Yes, I did submit a, an email to the all members of council and the Borough Manager, which states why I'm concerned about zoning to accommodate this development.
And so you're.
I was getting to that point when I was interrupted, by the way.
Right now, and I get you, and I think we just want to be clear that, you know, the zoning ordinance, you know, was enacted, I believe, back in November of last, last year. And so the time.
Are you talking about the amendment?
Correct, yes. The amendment that changed the zoning to update, I believe it's 37.1 of the zoning code. And so. And so, you know, this would not be the time to challenge that particular zoning amendment. Now, you certainly, you certainly can provide any comments and testimony and evidence you want to on, with respect to this application that's before council, because that's the purpose of this public hearing. But, but the actual spot zoning challenge is, is not ripe at this time. That's not what's before this council, so you really need to focus on the application itself and the, the related studies of that, that line of testimony.
Well, I would think that the spot, they, that's what zoning is, i- i- is applicable to this discussion, but I'm not gonna make an issue of it. I, I would just request that you folks review my testimony, my written testimony, which, which defines how I came to the conclusion that spot zoning was being used and that it is illegal. And therefore, the whole process you're going through is illegal, as, as far as I can tell. Now, other than that, you know, I mean, by, by hope, concern is that the zoning ordinance not being enforced and articles and a comprehensive plan objectives are, are being ignored, which involves assuring that Churchill remains a residential, basically a residential community. And, and that according to subarticle three of, article three oh four four and subarticle three of the zoning ordinance, there must be a clear separation of through and local traffic and minimal destruction, disruption of, of residential integrity. Therefore, based on my evaluation, I think that council should reevaluate its amendment and if, if they want to continue with this development, there are other ways that they can do it rather than spot zoning. And I, basically, that's my, my concern. And I'm, I'm not gonna, I, I don't think I should drag this out any longer. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer, try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. DePerna. I don't have any questions, but certainly we can give an opportunity to the other parties to, to cross examine if they so choose. So we'll ask Mr. Gallagher first.
We have no question. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other party objectors who wish to cross examine Mr. DePerna? We'll give it about fifteen seconds here. Looks like we have at least one. So while everyone else is searching for their raised hand button, we'll go ahead and move to Ms. Pellegrini and allow her to ask a question of Mr. DePerna.
Yes, yes, thank you very much. Mr. DePerna, my question is, is your professional experience, including your volunteer experience? Do you believe that this, the amendment to the code was a spot zoning?
Yes, I do. And I, and in my written testimony, I have cited a, a, a information I received from the Pennsylvania Department of Economic Development in which they, they listed three court cases.
Respectfully, Mr. DePerna, I, I apologize for interrupting. I really hate to do that, but there was previously an objection on this line of testimony. That objection was sustained, so we're not gonna be hearing any testimony about this particular line. Ms. Pellegrini, any other questions from Ms. Pellegrini?
So, but there's follow up to that, to that, is that right?
You know, I'm really having trouble picking up what you're saying, because we're getting a lot of echo. I don't know if you're hearing it on your end, Ms. Pellegrini. Is there, do you have multiple microphones going?
I don't think so, but I will double check on that. I'll, I'll, I'll just, and if I want to back, I'll raise my hand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pellegrini. Thanks for working with us through this technical difficulty. Are there, it looks like Ms. Kazman does have a question, so we'll go ahead and turn to Ms. Kazman.
Mr. DePerna, you said that there, there must be a clear separation of true and local traffic. Um, does, does the slip wrap at this definition, definition?
I'm not saying the borough zoning ordinance says that in our, in subarticle three of article three oh four, but no, that, that slip wrap does not meet the definition, in my opinion.
Okay, Ms. Kazman, if you could mute yourself, Ms. Pellegrini, if you could mute yourself. I don't think there's any questions except for maybe Borough Council. So Borough Council, do you have any questions for Mr. DePerna?
Council member Matt Castilla. Mr. DePerna, you stated in the beginning of your testimony that you're a registered professional engineer. Is your license currently active?
It's active, retired.
Okay, and just to help us understand a little bit more what you, you mentioned, I think, mechanical engineering, is that correct? What your university degree was?
Yes.
And do you have a master's at all?
Well, I have some graduate study, but no, I didn't spend my time in graduate school.
Okay, and what was your area of career focus?
My specialty is pipes, pumps and valves in fluid power type industries like nuclear power and coal-fired power plants and water processing plants.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other council members' questions for Mr. DePerna? Looks like we do have one more party objector, looks like Mr. McMullin, so Mr. McMullin, go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear on one thing. So I know that they objected to his testimony, but he is still allowed to make public comment for whatever he wants, correct? He can say whatever he wants in his public comment piece of his objector, no?
No, you can, it's got, it's gotta be relevant and it can't be unduly repetitive, otherwise we give people a lot of leeway.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Okay, looks like Ms. Tharrett has a question for Mr. DePerna. Go ahead, Ms. Tharrett.
All right, so I can ask Mr. DePerna questions?
Yes, you may.
Yes.
Okay, so given your background and that you were cut off at a certain point in your testimony before you were, your, what you were planning to say before you were done, I just wondered if you had anything to say about the stormwater system or the mechanics of the building or anything in your area of expertise?
Objection, this is, this is an, this has absolutely, this line of questioning has absolutely nothing to do with his direct testimony.
This is outside the scope. I'm gonna sustain that objection, that's outside the scope of Mr. DePerna's direct testimony, which related to his spot zoning challenge, I believe.
Yeah, I understood, I, I understand that objection with respect to what he already said. It's just that since he was interrupted and I'll never get a chance to, to speak again in the hearing, I just thought it might be decent to ask him a question like that.
I, I don't recall cutting Mr. DePerna off. I gave him, we gave him an opportunity to decide when he completed his testimony. He told us he had nothing more to testify to, and so that completes his direct, so.
There's something I would like to add. There is something I would like to add, if possible.
Sure, Mr. DePerna, why, why, why don't you go ahead while, while we're all here? If you could, you know, try to, try to keep it somewhat succinct, we'd appreciate it, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, it will be, and, and because I've never heard the borough engineer state anything about the structural integrity of the, of the site. Because, you know, I've worked at the Westinghouse Research over the years as a consultant for Westinghouse. And I can tell you, it's more like an academic site, you know, it's a, there really wasn't a lot of heavy machinery or, you know, it was mainly sort of like classrooms, auditoriums, you know, discussion places. It was like an university, actually. And that will, we add all these trucks and, and possibly layer belts and heavy machinery. I'm, I'm wondering if the borough engineer, is he going to bless the site? Because all this, all of our properties in Churchill are undermined. And it's, somebody should take a look, hopefully the borough engineer, on whether the site can stand any increase in, in, in weight due to this change in, in the application there.
Thank you, Mr. DePerna. Is that the end of your direct testimony?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Tharrett, did you have any questions about Mr. DePerna's last piece of testimony?
See, give me a second.
Sure, take your time.
Yeah, so I think this is the interesting point about whether this is conditional use or land application. So if there's a change in use, that, that changes the kinds of loads that are on the property. Is that something that would be part of the conditional use or are you actually going to look into that when you get to the land application?
Are you asking Mr. DePerna? Because now is the time to ask questions of Mr. DePerna.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was responding to you, Gavin. I'm sorry. Okay, so let me think of what he, he just testified to. Yeah, so that's what he asked. Yeah, so there's also, there's also, did you listen to the stormwater? Did you listen to the stormwater?
I did.
Man, it's the same objection.
That's it, that objection sustained. Did not testify regarding stormwater. He testified regarding the structural stability of the site.
I understand, I understand.
And, and somebody should look into that.
Thank you, Mr. DePerna. Ms. Tharrett, you don't have any other questions? I see you muted yourself. Okay.
Yes, okay. Okay, bye.
Yes, Mr. DePerna, thank you very much for your testimony. I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So we will go ahead and excuse you, but thank, thanks again. We will move on then. Alex, the next on my list is Ms. Suzanne Donski. Apologies for the pronunciation there. Do we have a Ms. Donski here?
Gavin, if, why don't we have, she is present, would she please raise her hand so we can promote her to become a panelist?
Ms. Donski, if you can hear us, please use the hand raise button so we can bring you up and get you an opportunity to provide testimony. I know Alex does sometimes ask me to mention the number of folks who are present, so I'll do that while we're waiting for Ms. Donski. As of now, we have a hundred and thirteen total, including eighty-five members of the public who are not panelists. So that's what makes it more difficult to find Ms. Donski, but hopefully we can do it. Just in case Ms. Donski is on the phone or has a phone easily accessible, Alex, can you provide your cell phone number just so someone could send a text if they need to?
Yes, please text four one two seven five eight 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 one eight. Four one two seven five eight 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 one eight. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Apologies for the delay, everyone. Thanks for, thanks for your patience. Give another ten seconds here and then we're gonna have to move past Ms. Donski to Ms. Azakoya. So Ms. Ms. Ada Azakoya, if you could get yourself ready, raise your hand virtually. And we'll bring you up to the table here.
In the meeting room, I see a I key Azakoya. And if that person is someone that was related to, or that's the device they're coming in on, I'm trying to promote that to panelists and they're not responding, so I will allow that person to talk. Maybe they can speak on behalf of them as a, as a person. And I think they did take the exception to become a panelist.
Great, Ms. Ms. Azakoya, can you hear me? She muted, Alex?
She, that is correct. Yeah, they're, they're still muted. And I've asked them to unmute.
Ms. Azakoya has denied to request to become a panelist. Ms. Azakoya, if you could send a text message to Alex, if you do want to put on your case, we'd appreciate it. Otherwise, we're gonna have to go ahead and, and move on to Mr. Mark McDonald. Mark is next up on the list. And if we hear from Ms. Donski or Ms. Azakoya, we will certainly try to get them in next to try to stay as close to this list as possible. So I know we heard from the McDonald's earlier, from Mrs. McDonald, but if Mark McDonald, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself and go ahead with your testimony.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to screen share some slides. If I can do this, let's see. Is this showing up on everybody's monitors?
Uh, no, sir, not mine. How did it matter? I think your camera may be covered by a post-it. No, that could be intentional.
So this, let me try the screen share one more time here, because this is important. I may need to defer if I can't get this to work. Okay, screen share.
Mr. Rob or Alex, are these documents I don't, that have been provided to the borough, I'm, I don't see them on the website.
So Mark provided something to me on Saturday, the twenty first, and as of this afternoon, he and I were working back and forth to try to get it corrected, so we could put a corrected version up. So, Mark, you can email it to me and I, I can share that screen. There we go. We see your testimony now is, is being shared. And meanwhile, Mark, why, why don't you make sure at least, if not by the end of the meeting or after the meeting, give me this exhibit so I can post it. So we can see your screen and we see slide three of twenty-one right now.
Perfect, am I still up there?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, you are.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I think this presentation will be a, a little bit different angle at things. I appreciate the concern before about, you know, being an expert in reviewing the various studies, which I certainly am not, but I would submit that there's a lot more to reviewing a professional study than just the technical aspects. So, and I'll get more to that later. I mean, the worst thing you could do in my pain of reviewing a professional study is just solely relying on the study and assuming it's correct. So, you know, the first slide up here, the top, we, we already know, I mean, this is an historic decision that's gonna live forever. There's a lot at stake. So the, 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 the story is you measure twice and cut once. Well, this time I think we need to measure four times and cut once. There, there's a lot at stake here. So I'm gonna go on tonight and talk about a lot of concerns that I have on this, on the studies. And some of them are listed here. I don't think all the information is being disclosed. They're, they're biased. We're not getting a balanced approach. Nobody's talking about growth in this facility. I don't think that's in any of the studies.
Mr. McDonald, I, I apologize for interrupting. We're getting almost like a table shaking noise from your, your microphone. I don't think I'm the only one who's getting it. Is there, is there something that's maybe moving and hitting up against something?
Well, I'll try to be still. Let me know if it comes up again.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. You know, computer software, relying on it without factoring in certain site-specific information, you know, vetting the information, sensitive. You know, vetting the information, sensitivity analysis, analysis. And I'm not certain the applicant is uh, giving us all the information and has been completely transparent. So I'll, I'll get to the answer before I go through everything, but uh. Uh, I don't think the applicants met thirty-four dash seven point one, uh, the need to provide a traffic study. That's certainly been done. Uh, but I think there's several flaws in it. Uh, and, and therefore that's not being met. And then the other studies, the sound and the air pollution are relying on that traffic study. So uh, I don't think they meet the requirements either. Uh, and I won't go through them, three oh four dash three four. There's several things down there. That um, I don't think uh, the applicant is meeting. So I've talked about lack of disclosure, disclosure and transparency. That's, that's a bold statement. Um, but let, let me go through this slide and the next slide. Because I think they're absolutely critical and the foundation of what we're all talking about. Because I'm not sure uh, we have a clear understanding of the operations of this facility. Uh, I'm not sure it's been fully disclosed. And why that's important is, is that it's the foundation of all these numbers and uh, and activity that we're talking about. Um, so let me go through this one quickly. So for example, on the inbound packages, of course, we have trucks coming in. I'm not sure that they're all coming in full, some coming in empty. The reason why that's important is that can change uh, the, the truck numbers, the truck activity. On the left there, uh, are the trucks allowed to come in uh, the site if they're early? I believe in some location, Amazon does not allow that. So if they're early, they've gotta drive around someplace until they're allowed to come in. Uh, again, this is just information that I don't think has been disclosed, discussed. That is really important on understanding um, the effects of all these things. So a truck comes in and uh, it drops off the trailer and now I'm left with a cab. Um, is that cab required to leave the site? Uh, or if not, can he voluntarily leave the site while he's waiting to come back uh, and get his trailer? That's obviously important if there's cabs uh, going back and forth. So um. That's enough on that slide. That's, but, but again, these, these factors are, are really important on understanding the activity. There hasn't been a lot of talk on uh, outbound. We've talked about North for Sales. My understanding is, is that this is gonna be a uh, a hub. For about five last mile delivery stations, one of them being North for Sales. So trucks out of those forty-nine docking bays will be leaving the facility. Going to one of these five locations. North for Sales being one of them, maybe Lawrenceville. The other three are still to be determined. Are semi trucks going to all these locations? Um, if not, if they have to use a smaller vehicle, that smaller vehicle probably takes two vehicles for each semi truck. Um, what's the ultimate five locations? Uh, can a semi truck get to the ultimate five locations? My point here is, is that we don't know any of this. And this, this is fundamental on understanding some of the questions everybody's uh, has. And these things haven't been uh, disclosed. So um, so that is based, I mean, there's more questions and answers there, but you know, it, it hasn't been disclosed to us. And you know, at one level, you know, Amazon is a very well-run company. They're very secretive about their operations. They don't want competitors to know what they're doing. Um, and I understand that, but we can't uh, allow that. Uh, we need that information in order to make a good decision. So as far as growth, um, couple of the experts were asked, uh, have you included any growth? Uh, in your study, uh, specifically the uh, the air quality study? And the answer was no. And I think another answer was, uh, well, this facility will be maxed out on day one. Well, that doesn't make business sense. You're, you're not gonna spend three hundred million dollars on a facility and have the capacity maxed out on day one. So nobody's supplied that information. So this slide uh, is my best shot as to how much of this facility is being used on day one. And I'm not talking about adding buildings. We're just talking about the utilization of the facility. So the top line there, we already, the traffic study says uh, the same number of trucks that come in uh, go out in an hour. So we've also said that we've got forty-nine bays. So forty-nine bays and one truck an hour, when you do the math, that's twenty-three hundred in and out trips in a twenty-four hour period. Twenty-three hundred. The traffic study has six hundred and seventy-two in and out trips uh, in a twenty-four hour time period. That shows that we're using the docks initially twenty-nine percent of the time. A third, a less than a third. These numbers may not be exact, but directionally, this facility looks like it's only using a third out of the gate. And at one level, that would make sense to me. Amazon's planning for growth going forward. There's a number of packages moving through these facilities is only gonna grow. So this has the capacity of another sixteen hundred trucks coming through it. Um, or you know, two and a half times. And that's assuming Amazon doesn't get any better and more efficient on the time it takes them to load and unload uh, trucks. So this is a big deal to me. We uh, there's enormous unused capacity on day one that is going to be filled. Uh, sooner than later, that's not in any of these studies and not in any of these assumptions. All these tolerances we're talking about is on the six hundred and seventy-two truck trips. And they've got the capacity to uh, to triple that. Slide. So as far as disclosing information, many, Amazon uh, or the applicant would want us to make this decision on. Um, as little information as possible, but of course it's up to us to not allow that to happen. Uh, this is a uh, a press release, an article from a couple weeks ago out in Oceanside, uh, California. And I certainly don't know all the facts of this, but the, the highlights are interesting just, just to note that they overturned uh. Five-nothing vote overturned a, after the Cl- Planning Commission approval. And uh, the reason why they overturned it is in the second paragraph there is the council members got an addendum. Uh, that was produced after uh, unanimous approval. That showed discrepancies in what they were initially provided in the number of vans, noise, parking and details of the project. And the next paragraph down, that informa- information was only provided at the request of, of the city. Um, so we, we, we need to note that or whatnot. We need to keep asking the questions and, and answering and get answers. But I don't think uh, everything's been disclosed to us right now. So we've talked about, or I'm talking about misleading and deceptive statements. Um, on the October seventh, two thousand and twenty meeting, the traffic expert started. In his descriptions of facilities, and he described this facility type. Being mainly about employees going to work, basically jobs with minimal truck traffic. That's what he said. Um, that, that's not a, a, a balanced, that, that's somebody trying to sell us uh, on what this facility is about. That was so grossly misleading. Uh, he went on to say later in that session that, you know, what I, what I really meant. Was the truck traffic was a small percentage of the total traffic. Well, that's factually true, but I still, I have a truck coming in and out of the facility every two minutes. So that's another misleading and deceptive uh, a statement. It's not balanced. Um, this, the, the, the study's one-sided. Uh, they're trying to sell us. Um, on tax revenue, on those slides, you know, we see this, uh, the information where the total investment and assumed assessed value of the property. Will be three hundred million. That's the total projected investments. And that number is being used for the assessed value in calculating the tax revenue. That investment, um, you know, includes a lot of soft costs, environmental remediation, tree removal, public road, building demo. Other items, I don't think any of those items are gonna be included uh, in the, you know, assessed value. Uh, when this is done, that could be millions of dollars that are on there. Um, so I, I believe the tax revenue is being materially overstated from this project. I talked about the bias of the studies.
Mr. McDonald, can I, I apologize. I need to interrupt you just for a second. Uh, we're having problems with the, a microphone on the applicant's side. So if you just give us a moment to try to work through it, uh, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Metz, are, are you able to respond, hear me in response? Uh, we, we cannot hear you still. Um, and I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. McDonald. I didn't, didn't mean to cut you off. Alex, can you help us work with uh, the Moses Hampton Room here?
Yes, I'll try to get that um, going back again. Sorry about that, Gavin.
Oh, no problem. We'll just, just give it a second here and I'll try to, try to do the same and ask to unmute. And the reason why we have to hold up is because the extent that there's objections we need to deal with, um, you know, we need to be able to hear the, the lawyers.
Did you hear that, Gavin?
Uh, I'd, no, I missed that, Mr. McDonald, sorry.
Hello?
We can hear you now. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what's happened. We haven't done anything differently on our end here. Um, uh, probably about five minutes ago, we tried to uh, uh, assert a relevancy objection. It seems like we're, we're going into materials that are completely, or uh, testimony that is completely irrelevant. Um, I know it's addressed in our standing objection, but um, you know, the, we, we've tried to give leeway and this is going above and beyond. Um, so we, we would ask that this uh, testimony, um.
Understood, Mr. Gallagher. I, I understand the objection. It's noted for the record. I think uh, Mr. McDonald's uh, line of, line of testimony really relates to the credibility of the applicant's witnesses and case. I think it's, I think it's appropriate, but certainly uh, your objection is noted and uh, we'll go back to Mr. McDonald. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Rob. Um, so uh, exactly what you said, Mr. Rob. I mean, I think these are studies that are biased or, and therefore not credible. Uh, the applicant at Hillwood, Hillwood, of course, is hired by their customer, Amazon. Amazon pays their bills. Langin is hired by their customer, Hillwood. Various experts are hired and paid by their customer, Langin. Um, every expert for the applicant, of course, is an advocate, as they should be, uh, for, for their customer. And it even says on Langin's and Epsilon's websites that they contribute to the success, success of their clients and effectively advocate for their clients. They should. They're, they're paying their bills. Uh, and they know if they get a positive result uh, for their clients, they're probably gonna get more business. And if they don't, uh, they won't. Uh, and as a sidebar, I uh, was looking at other sites. And in Hudson, New Hampshire, the Amazon Fulfillment Center project. Interestingly, all the, many of the professionals were the same, uh, Hillwood, Langin and Epsilon. Uh, so they go from project to project. And all those expert studies that I read up there were all conservative. Um, there's nothing wrong uh, with this. It, it's how business generally works. Um, but what would we be wrong if our decision makers do not fully recognize the inherent bias? Uh, in these studies and protect our own interests by finding these uh, expert studies to lack credibility? Um, I've been in business for, for a long time and reviewed a lot of professional studies. And uh, it's more than just uh, relying on that professional to, to, to be correct. You've gotta bring in, as I've got down here, uh, you've gotta recognize the bias. Every study I've ever seen has been labeled as conservative. Um, you've gotta perform due diligence, trust but verify, combine your own unique knowledge. And I'll get through some of these things, but the top one is the biggest one. And you can never solely rely on the professional's opinion and assume it's right. They can make mistakes. Uh, they can be misinterpreting the data you gave them. And I'll remind everybody of the Walmart in Kilbuck Township in oh-six that had that mammoth landslide. Uh, closed route sixty-five for two weeks and took seven years to, more than seven years to stabilize. I'm sure every professional there stood up and said, in my professional opinion, this project uh, will be safe and sound. Um, and you know, we wanna review those studies and Gateway Engineers does review them for us. Uh, and I think they do a, a good job, but that's not the total solution. I mean, it's really different when you're reviewing a biased study versus performing uh, your own study. So let me get to some specifics as to my concerns and uh, going through that list of how to review uh, uh, the, these studies. And why I say what I say. I think the traffic study is missing uh, a litany of what I'll call site-specific uh, information. And I'm referring to Exhibit six A in the March twenty-one uh, traffic study. For example, uh, on the Rhode Island Road Business twenty-two intersection. If I'm coming uh, you know, from Penn Hills or from Monroeville and I'm sitting at that intersection. I've got two choices. I can uh, go up Nottingham or I can go towards the Parkway. If I go towards the Parkway and get on the Parkway, I've gotta travel over three lanes. Uh, of traffic immediately. That doesn't uh, sound too good. Or I gotta go down McCrady and face those lights. I would submit that most people are gonna go up Nottingham Road. Make the right on the Churchill and go down into the facility. It's easier. There's a couple stoplights. Um, I think that's where most people will go. We're all, we're all local. You can, you know, make your own judgment on that. When I look at the traffic study on how many cars they are assuming do that. The, the answer is zero. The traffic study is assuming no cars uh, do that. And then it's vice versa, coming out of the facility. If I went in that way, I'm gonna go back that way. So that Churchill Road Nottingham interchange, um, traffic studies assume nobody's going up there. That's a site-specific item that's not gonna show up in a computer model. I would also say geographically, uh, that certainly would include all of those people as uh, appropriate uh, objectors. Uh, so to speak, because they're gonna be affected by this. Next one down, the truck exit assumption may be grossly wrong. Or just assuming that the truck's gonna go out uh, sixteen, forty percent between roadway A and roadway B. There's a lot of reasons that uh, they may a hundred percent go out one exit or the other. Uh, it's actually easier for a semi to make a left-hand turn. So the left, the westbound trucks could go out on roadway A. Um, the trucks heading east, can they navigate that left onto Buella and the quick right on the William Penn? They might wanna go out the other way. I don't know, but the point is a hundred percent of the trucks. There are scenarios where they go out all in one exit. And that hasn't been in the model. I mean, that hasn't been uh, tested. Nobody, nobody has done that. You've gotta uh, do a sensitivity analysis on these. And I'm not even talking about my previous slide on the excess capacity. We're only using a third of the facility. All these numbers can double uh, very, very quickly. Um, so the Greensburg Pike Houses, you know, if they all go out there, let me try another screen share if this is gonna work. We've all, we've commented on how close those houses are. Is this coming up?
Yes, it is.
All right. So just some, I mean, it's different to say a house is close to the road uh, versus seeing it. So just, you know, four pictures here, just, just, just to show it. Um, that's, that's taken from Greensburg. So just, you know, four pictures here, just, just, just to show it. Um, that's, that's taken from Greensburg Pike. Uh, that's how close those three houses are. Uh, uh, another shot, um, you can see how close these houses are. Uh, a third shot and, uh, and, uh, last shot. Um, uh, this is the, uh, the, the, the current ramp, uh, if you will, going into the facility that's been dormant for some time. But you can see how close that house is. And on that topic, uh, a sidebar, I've learned that, um, when Westinghouse was operating on this exit ramp, it was only open in the AM hour, rush hour, and the PM rush hour. The gates actually would close. It was open in the morning for an hour and a half and opening the evening for an hour and a half. So that's three hours a day, five days a week. That's fifteen hours. Uh, this facility at twenty-four, seven is going to be open, uh, those gates will be open a hundred and sixty-eight hours uh, versus the fifteen hours that it, uh, was open. McCrady Road, this is a big one, uh, to me. So the traffic study assumes three percent of the traffic is going to come down McCrady Road. That's what their computer model tells them. No site-specific information. I'd asked that question of the expert. Any site-specific information? And the answer was, well, yeah, we, we did that. We use the SBC information, which gives us the zip codes where everybody's going to be driving from. That's missing the, the, the points. So again, if the people don't come up Nottingham, they're generally not going to get on the Parkway and fight over three lanes of traffic. They're going to go down McCrady Road. The computer model doesn't know that. We're not factoring that type of information into the traffic study and, uh, it's not credible. I mean, how can you rely on the traffic study when they're not, uh, factoring that type of information? And I, I, I don't think it's credible. Um, another example about, I mean, the, the, the March twenty-one and exhibit six B on the traffic study had the semi-wheelers coming out on the Buella Road going straight on the Churchill Road and making a left onto that Holland Churchill Road ramp. An, an eighteen-wheeler cannot navigate that ramp. It's challenging for a car. That later got changed, but this is March of twenty-one, uh, that they had that in the study. Um, and we're being asked to rely on this study. The, the three seventy-six ramp going west. Um, the, the study shows about, uh, a truck every four minutes with thirty percent utilization of the facility. So that could be, uh, a truck every, yeah, two minutes very quickly. The question is whether that ramp can handle it. And we're not talking about volume. We're talking about the type of, uh, vehicles going on there. That Parkway, uh, was built in June of fifty-three. Um, it's not built for all these eighteen-wheelers going through it. And that's been recognized. And I, I guess a study, uh, is starting to be, uh, initialized, but you know, Mr. Metz, uh, spoke at the November second meeting and mentioned that that review process is started and the applicant, uh, thankfully has stepped forward and said that they'll pay for the initial study. But because of the process and the federal governments, he, he, he put us on notice that this could be a decade-long process. Well, I, I don't think we can take that risk, uh, of, of approving this and have it go through. If we have a problem and it's going to take a decade, uh, to fix it. So, um, this facility is revolutionary with the logistics and their robots. I mean, what do they have to do when we push that button, our computer to get that package to us? Man, it's, they're improving every day. It, it, it's just cutting-edge facility. They're not out there. Uh, they're improving them and building new things every day. So it's so advanced that when the traffic study goes to their ITE manual, uh, as a base, um, there's little to no data for this type of facility in the ITE manual. That ITE manual is usually used to provide a checker balance, check and balance to the client-provided data. You know, ITE manual would have, uh, data from very similar facilities. And, uh, and the traffic study would use those numbers. Boy, you can't do that here because the, the, the data is not in the manual. And the traffic engineer testified to that, uh, on the July nineteenth meeting. It, uh, three hours, two minutes of the, of the video that there's not many samples. The data is not classified. And I saw the same thing, uh, from another expert on a different project, but the ITE manual has low sample size, which then reduces the confidence level of using any land use codes, land use code from the manual. However, they pick an ITE classification land use code. And because that particular code produced numbers that were higher than the applicant-provided data, they're saying the traffic study is conservative. There's no basis for saying the traffic study is conservative. We've got applicant-provided data and we don't have the normal check and balance that the ITE manual would normally serve to do. So we're left with, uh, you need to get actual data from similar operating facilities. Uh, and that's, that, that hasn't been done. So we're solely relying on the applicant-provided data. And when the traffic expert testified about his knowledge of that applicant-provided data, he said he didn't know how the data was collected. He didn't know the site it was collected from and whether or not it was done by a traffic engineer. And when he and others are being asked questions about, wouldn't it be best to go to a similar facility and col- to collect that actual data? Uh, there's a various list of reasons, uh, why that's not being done, but everybody seems to be evasive. So we're sitting here.
Mr. Rob, we're going to start, we're starting the same relevancy objection. All that is going on right now is just reading straight down this report and it seems like there's no discernible site. Ask that the, we would have no objection to this, uh, PowerPoint presentation just being submitted into the record as is, um, as an encapsulation of Mr. McConnell's, McDonald's testimony.
Well, Mr. McDonald, you certainly have that option if you, if you like that, but I, if, if Mr. McDonald wants to testify, um, you know, even if he's testifying from what something he wrote up, I think he has the right to do that. But certainly, Mr. McDonald, we welcome, uh, written submissions. They'll be given, uh, you know, reviewed and given weight by council. It's up to you.
Well, I'd like to continue on. I appreciate that, Mr. Gallagher. I, I don't know that this would be any different than somebody reading, uh, several pages of text. It's just not in front of everybody. I do appreciate, uh, not wanting to sit here and, and have everybody listen to me just read these slides down. Uh, and I'll try to limit that, but there is some color. Uh, that's, that wouldn't show up on the slides if I just simply submitted the slides.
Thanks, Mr. McDonald. Go ahead and, uh, objection never ruled.
So, 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 so again, we're, we're relying on data that's not been vetted. Uh, in any way, uh, to my, to my knowledge. Uh, and then at the bottom there, I mean, we're, the ITE manual again is not a check and balance in this case because these facilities are not so new. Flying blind, uh, and we're relying on this traffic study. So maybe one of the last points of the traffic study, they showed a traffic simulation at, at rush hour. Um, you know, good simulation, cars and trucks going back and forth. It really showed a good picture. I mean, it, it showed that the traffic looks like it's better than the current environment. And when I asked the traffic expert that, he said, yes, I mean, in many cases, traffic will be better. And, uh, at one point in the, in the simulation, there was only one car in the intersection, uh, during, during rush hour. And just, just let me bring it up for you. Um, this is a snapshot, but this is a snapshot of the simulation, again, during rush hour. So this is during rush hour and there's one car on, on, on here, that little blue car right there, and it had come up from Buella. So I can appreciate, you know, I'm not sure I agree with it, that, that traffic would somehow get better. But this is a snapshot at rush hour. I don't understand how there can't be any cars during rush hour, you know, going faster, flowing through, whatnot. Uh, it makes me question, uh, the credibility of the, of the simulation. Uh, surge period, uh, holiday season. That's come up a couple of times. The answer from the traffic expert, uh, none of the studies have included that. I think the traffic experts and maybe others testified that well, the, the peak seasonal season, that, that's only about fourteen days in total. And some of them aren't during the holidays and they're not all consecutive. So they're immaterial and that's why we didn't include them. But then when he went on to talk about the parking study, he said that extra spaces were included uh, in the site for the seasonal increase. Those two statements, uh, don't, they're not consistent. They, they don't go together. And I'm not sure the whole thing passes the common sense test that we're saying that the, that the peak season, uh, is immaterial. Down below, there's a quote from a, an Amazon employee talking about the peak season being six weeks and that their workforce doubles, uh, when, when that happens. Majority of the traffic was collected in May of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, driving back and forth in the Parkway for forty years, uh, I've experienced that May is when the traffic starts to go down. It starts to go down because of vacations and it starts to go down because of colleges and universities ending a semester. And that's the month where the majority of the traffic data was collected. That may be a, a low point and be distorting the, the numbers. The new slip ramp, uh, was mentioned previously tonight. So we're getting a new public road. That new public road, uh, is not included, uh, in the traffic study. So, you know, people getting off, uh, heading east off the Parkway and they get off that public road and they'll be joining that intersection A. Uh, for whatever reason, the traffic study is assuming zero people will do that, or they're just not including it. Uh, again, I don't know how we could, uh, rely on that. Sensitivity analysis, you know, when you review a study, you know, you know, which assumptions are more sensitive than others, you determine that. And then you really drill down on those particular assumptions. So make sure you, you, you've got them, you got them right. When the traffic engineer was asked if he'd done sensitivity analysis, he didn't know what that meant. And then when he heard an explanation, he said, well, yeah, okay, we've somewhat, somewhat done that. But since they used a conservative assumption on the traffic study, they, 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 they've kind of done that. Well, again, the traffic study cannot be labeled conservative. It shows a lack of understanding of a very key concept. Uh, and it's just not about volume. I talked about the trucks going out, a hundred percent out of one exit or the other. It's, you know, switching around the variables and what's, what's, what causes us a problem and going through all that. Uh, that doesn't, uh, that hasn't happened. And I'll again bring up the volume. They're only using a third of this facility. So I, you, you can't rely on that study, uh, without that being done. Uh, the air quality study, uh, has at least one error in it. I didn't spend much time on it. Uh, I brought it up in, uh, cross-examination. Uh, it's on exhibit B, page fifty-three. Uh, there's a bad number in there. Is it material? I'm not sure whether it is or not, but I'm not sure that's the issue. I didn't spend much time with it and I found an error. So how many other ones, uh, might be in there? Uh, the before and after, after pictures we've seen have been very helpful. But all the ones I've seen have all been from the Parkway or, or from an entrance. Uh, I'm sure with today's technology, we could get before and after pictures day and night from residences. And that's what we really want to see. Uh, without showing that, how do you know? What's it really going to look like? And I would believe through today's technology that could be done. The roundabout, uh, mitigation. So the roundabout, uh, of course, is now, no longer is part of the plan. But I wanted to speak to it because again, it speaks to credibility. The roundabout was originally proposed and it was proposed as the optimal solution would be the first in this district. And it would be a feather in the cap of Churchill. The roundabout was subsequently eliminated. Leads me to a couple of questions. It's the optimal solution that was presented was later eliminated. How, how was this, how poorly researched or vetted was it, uh, as part of the traffic study? And since this was the optimal solution, the second choice would not be as good. Um, that's another example of why that study is not credible. I have a concern on the, on the second choice. So the second choice, I think, may create a, what's called a secondary adverse impact. You solve problem A, but you create problem B. And I'm speaking to the full functioning light at the end of McCrady. So we've got three lights now going north on Buella. And the traffic study expert testified that those lights will all be synchronized, which makes sense. So don't worry, you're not going to get stuck between that. He didn't mention anything about, uh, traffic then coming off of William Penn. You know, when, when those lights turn red, now you're getting traffic off of William Penn. So that McCrady light can't stay red. Uh, it's, it's getting that traffic now. So I would submit that that light right now, I think, is a blinking red. Uh, that situation's been there for forty years. And if a full functioning light was the answer, uh, I presume it would have been done by now. Uh, I'm not sure the second choice, uh, that's, uh, that's being proposed, uh, is not creating other problems. The truck drivers, uh, I think are generally subcontractors and non-employees. I don't remember that being disclosed or discussed. The point would be, uh, the applicant doesn't have as much control over a subcontractor as they would an employee. I have heard, uh, stories where the, that the truck drivers, um, uh, don't drive appropriately. And the answer from the facility is, well, they're subcontractors, uh, you know, sign them, find them or what, find them or whatnot. What do you want us to do? So, uh, uh, I'm at the end, um, for all the reasons I mentioned, uh, lack of disclosure, lack of transparency. Uh, we're using a third of the facility on day one. That, that's a monster on all these things. Uh, I, I don't think the applicant has met the requirements, uh, of the, uh, particular code sections, and I think the vote should be no.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. If you could, uh, unshare or stop sharing your screen so we can see everybody again. Great. Thank you very much. Uh, we are going to be breaking at ten o'clock, a short break to, uh, let the court reporter and captioner stretch their, uh, fingers. But before we do that, we can um, hopefully get a few questions in from Mr. McDonald. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Gallagher. Uh, Mr. Gallagher, do you have any cross-examination questions for Mr. McDonald?
Uh, just, uh, one, our, Mr. McDonald, are you a, uh, professional traffic operations engineer?
Uh, I am not, Mr. Gallagher, but I don't think I need to be to make the organizations, observations that I did.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thanks, Mr. Gallagher. Uh, are there any other questions from, uh, party objectors for Mr. McDonald? Give it about fifteen seconds here. Give everyone an opportunity to find their raise hand button. And I did, uh, take this, uh, moment to recognize the, uh, Ike as a Koye, uh, number or square or whatever you want to call it. Um, I did see an arm raised. Presumably that's for Ms. Asakoya. Uh, who we can move to next, assuming that there's no, uh, no questions from, uh, party objectors or borough council. So we'll go to borough council now. Uh, borough council, any questions for Mr. McDonald? Okay, hearing none from borough council.
Sorry, sorry. We were having some discussion in the room about who was going first.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Um, Mr. McDonald, so I guess, can you help us understand this twenty-nine percent, uh, utilization? I don't follow the calculations. I mean, do you have any source material for that? And, and it'd be helpful if you brought that slide back up. And, and it'd be helpful if you brought that slide back up. Um, I find that quite confusing.
Well, that's a good question. Uh, let me, let me try to bring that back up here. It's a, it's a, I'm glad you asked about that. It's, it's a monster point for us all to understand. There we go. Well, let me, let's, uh, let's talk about it. Let me uh walk us through this. Um, again, uh, at one level. Uh, I, we, we shouldn't be going over this slide. This should be disclosed to us. This is a, maybe one of the most important points of, of the whole thing, right? I mean, it speaks to current volume and future volume that everybody's talking about. But it hasn't been disclosed, so I'm doing the best I can of uh determining what it is. I think we would agree that the applicant is not going to open a $300 million facility. And not have any excess capacity on day one. And again, we're not talking about adding buildings.
So, so just, just from my understanding, sir, the, the utilization of docs, the 29%. I, I mean, is there a formula that you use to get to that? I mean, is there a specific reference?
Yeah, yes, there is. So let me walk you through that quickly. So uh, but the math there, so uh the 29%. Uh, the traffic study is assuming 672 in and out trips in a 24-hour period. The facility has 49 bays. The traffic study assumes that uh a truck is in and out in an hour. So when you do the math on 49 bays. And a truck per hour a bay. The facility with those 49 bays uh can handle 2,300 in and out truck trips in one, one day.
How, how do you get to that number? If I take 49 times 24?
Forty-nine uh times 24 times two, because don't forget that trucks going in and out. That 672 is an in and out. You might be coming up with 1176.
Which, which still only goes to 2,352. I thought you just said it was 3,000 some odd.
No, no. They, 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 in 24 hours, it has a capacity of 2,300, 2,352.
Okay. So, so just, just so I understand, I mean, that's, that's simply based on the number of loading docks. That has nothing to do with the analysis of the supporting traffic or anything else that was testified to by the traffic experts.
What I'm, the traffic experts and all those studies are using 672 trucks going in and out. That's what all these studies are based on. The query is, well, what, what growth uh can happen in this facility? It looks like they're only using 29% of it on day one. So there is substantial room for that 672 number of trucks in it, in its study to double, triple. They have the capacity to do it.
Okay.
And I, and I, and I, we, I think I'd submit that Amazon uh or the applicant uh. They're going to keep finding ways to uh load trucks faster, unload them faster. The number of trucks going through this facility presumably is only going to grow. I think the online uh ordering will continue to grow.
Okay, just, just for one further point of clarification. So this, 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 the math that you've put in front of us isn't based on any of the information provided by the applicant. It's not based on any type of similar facilities or traffic standards that are out there, et cetera. It's, it's simply based on the volume of docs and your understanding that it would take an hour for a truck to be in and out of the facility.
Well, uh, I, I, I think that's uh partially uh accurate. Um, we, the, the applicant has submitted that this facility will have 49 docks. We know that. The applicant has submitted that the same number of trucks uh that go in in an hour come out in that hour. So the applicant has told us that a truck is there for one hour. So they've told us they have 49 bays. A truck is there for an hour in and outs. All I'm doing is the math from that. I'm just doing the calculation of what they have told us.
Okay. Uh, could you go to slide number seven next, please? I have a question on that. I think one more. Page, page number seven, maybe. I noted at the bottom. So next slide, please.
Keep going.
Yep, uh, right there. Nope, I'm sorry. Page, page, it says page number seven at the bottom. This is page number eight. Now we're on page number nine, so we need to back up, please. Yeah, right there. So, um, I guess something caught, you know, basically on here, you had said something that they, they stated that, or you stated that you agreed with what the traffic engineer said was factually true. But then you went on to say that it's not right. Uh, can you clarify that statement? Cause I, I don't follow. If it's factually true, then how is it also wrong?
Yeah, yeah. Well, uh, I'm so glad you, you asked that because I, I didn't go over properly. Uh, you know, something can be factually true, but misleading, and I'll explain that. So uh, what he, again, later on came to say, so what I, what I, I didn't mean to say minimal truck traffic. Uh, what I meant to say was the truck traffic is a small percentage of the total traffic. Okay. Well, that's true. But I would consider that misleading because the truck traffic is a truck in and out of the facility every two minutes. So he's portraying uh the perception that because the truck traffic is a small percentage of the 1,500 cars are going in and out for 3,000 trips. It's, it's minimal. Don't, don't worry about it. Uh, I, I, I think that's misleading and deceptive. I got a truck going out every two minutes. And he's, he's.
Yeah, that, thank you for the clarification.
So, so it's factually true. Um, but I, I would submit very misleading.
I understand your position now. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, I guess the, the last question I have then would be, uh, you know, it was asked by someone else and, and you know, you stated that you're not a traffic or, or engineering expert. Um, you know, can you help us understand, you know, do you have a professional background? Um, you know, or personal, I guess. Background, history with, uh, you know, it seems like you've delved quite deeply and tried to present some of this information, you know, including your own calculations. What, uh, what basis do you have for presenting that?
So, um, my, my background is I am a CPA. Uh, and a chief financial officer uh for the company I worked for. Uh, 40 years of experience of uh dealing with, you know, various professional reports uh from law firms, uh, studies, appraisals or whatnot. And boy, one thing I learned the hard way was the worst thing you, the biggest mistake you can make is to take that professional report and just assume it's right. And it's not pejorative to the people who put the report together. They could have misinterpreted data. I've got unique data to add into it and knowledge. Uh, and that what, that's what makes the, the report good. I pointed out site-specific information here relative to uh local items. That, that's an example. That's not in the traffic study. It should be.
Thank you for the clarification. I have no further questions.
Anything else from council members?
Yeah, Gavin, it's Kevin Collins. Um, Mr. McDonald, I, I just want to ask your opinion on something. You mentioned the ramps going onto the Pockley. And uh specifically the westbound ramp. And it was mentioned back last fall that that would take 10 years to do something about. But your opinion, if somehow we could get ramps, say, off of that slip road onto the eastbound traffic, which from my limited knowledge could be done. Would you think a lot of these problems would be alleviated? Or a lot of your concerns would be alleviated?
Well, I wasn't fully following what you're saying there, but you're only, it sounds like speaking to the 376 westbound ramp.
Yeah, well, that's, that's one concern, but I'm, I'm thinking that if we somehow could get a ramp onto eastbound 376 off of that slip road. And keep a lot of the eastbound traffic away from the uh Buella Road, William Penn Highway intersection.
Well, yeah, so uh, as already has been pointed out, I'm not the traffic expert, but I would presumably that certainly would help. One, a couple of questions would be, of course, what's the timing? But you know, it can't be said enough. Let me bring, bring back in um this capacity utilization. Um, I'm not sure we're dealing with the right numbers here as far as volume. Uh, and we're making a huge decision on potentially really bad data or bad assumptions.
Okay. Thank you for your opinion. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks, Mr. Collins. Anything else from the council chambers? Or any other council people? Um, I see Ms. Ms. Pellegrini has her hand raised. Uh, why don't we try to uh get Ms. Pellegrini's question in so we can, uh, right before we break here?
Thank you very much. I hope not too much feedback. Uh, I'm trying to fix, fix, but I don't seem, seem to, an answer. Um, my question to you, Mr. McDonald, I don't think it is. Yes, yes. Based on your presentation that, that you put for us, for us uh tonight, can you?
Ms. Ms. Pellegrini, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I gotta stop you. I'm, I'm getting the, the timeout sign from the court reporter. I don't think it's because she, she's desperate to stop right now, but we're really having difficulty uh getting your testimony, I know your questions. And it's just that everything's echoing. Uh, I don't know if there's a way you could call in and let, uh, let us know what phone number or let, you know, maybe text Alex what phone number you're going to be calling in on. And we can unmute it that way. I don't want you to lose an opportunity, but it's just not working.
Okay, I'll do that. Um.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the, the, I think this is probably a good time for us to take about a five to seven minute break here. Hopefully Ms. Pellegrini can work out her technical difficulty. And then we'll do a last segment, uh, hard stop at, at the latest 11 o'clock for instructions from borough council. Alex, it looks like we're still waiting on a couple of council members.
That is correct.
Okay.
Everyone, you go ahead and start.
Okay, uh, we'll go back on the record at 10:17 here and go through our final stretch for tonight. Mr. Graziani, I understand that we have uh Ms. Pellegrini on the phone. Is that correct, Ms. Pellegrini?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks. And for for our records, uh, we were comparing notes. Can you can you uh spell your uh first and last name for us?
Of course. Uh, it's spelled J E A N. And then last name P E L L E G R I N I.
Okay, great. And was there was there a Jane Pellegrini at some point?
Yes, that's my mother. Yeah.
Okay, and?
I'm I'm speaking on her behalf.
Okay. When you say speaking on her behalf, can you help us understand just just so we're clear? Are you're not you're not her power of attorney or legal counsel?
I'm her power of attorney. And I'm her daughter.
Okay, and so she is you're conveying her concerns? Is that the idea or questions?
I am, yes. We have talked about extensively. She's participated when I've been with her. This technology, even for myself, I feel I'm somewhat familiar with. It's it can be very difficult for people who are not native technology users, as you I'm sure have heard from many others, not just me.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Pellegrini. Uh, thank you for clarifying that. And we had uh Mr. McDonald uh who hopefully is still with us, and I believe you're you were uh you were planning to have your cross examination questions for Mr. McDonald. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, Mr. McDonald, uh, are you with us?
Uh, I I am.
Okay, great. Uh, Ms. Pellegrini, go ahead and ask your question to Mr. McDonald.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Mr. McDonald for your patience and getting me uh on to be able to ask you this question. Uh, based on your presentation that you put before all of us tonight, what I'd really appreciate understanding, I think it was woven throughout your presentation, but I'd like to have your summation of what you think the key additional or amended or corrected or all of the above data points, information, studies, whatever you want to call um the information, what of what do you think the applicant should provide to be able to give the council a fair and adequate input to make an assessment?
Well, how much time do you have?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm
Objection. This is again, I mean, this is this is getting unduly repetitive right now.
I I I recognize the objection. If I could, can we just try to work with uh Ms. Pellegrini and Mr. McDonald to to cut straight to the chase here? Mr. McDonald, you know, when you when you say she asked in in sort of summary form, um, he asked us how much time we have and, you know, all the time we need really, but in in interest of of everyone's uh sort of being sensitive to everybody's uh situation here. If if you feel that you can explain briefly what additional data is missing in your mind, in your opinion, and provide that answer to Ms. Pellegrini, that would be helpful.
Sure. So that's really comprehensive. I I I can throw out a few things, but it would take more time to come up with a uh a comprehensive uh legitimate list. But at at the macro summary level, um, a lot of it's about disclosure. We're we're going off of this 672 truck trips. Um, the facility has much more capacity. It has not been disclosed to us the full operations of this facility, the in and out, they coming in and out uh full empty. Uh, we 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 need that information to uh which is the foundation of all these studies. Uh, these studies could all be wrong, and in fact, probably are wrong because they're using the wrong data input. So we we need more transparency information from the applicants on the operation of the facility is a good start and go from there.
Do you have any additional questions, Ms. Pellegrini?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. We will go ahead then. Uh, I believe council had asked all their questions, so that that lets us move back to hopefully Ms. Ezecoye Ada Ezecoye. And Alex, uh, I know at one point we had Ms. Ezecoye uh with a hand raised, or it was under Ike, I believe, Ike Ezecoye. So if uh Ike or Ada Ezecoye could please uh raise your hand again like you had done previously or mute you and uh there we go. Fantastic. Alex, can you help out there?
Yeah. Um, I don't have a a presentation, so do I wait for the the public comment period? It's kind of uh a comment and question based on on Mr. McDonald's presentation. So I don't know. I don't have a presentation.
Well, you're not required to have a presentation, Ms. Ezecoye, and you have the option of either providing whatever testimony you want now as a party objector, so you could just uh, you know, testify, provide, you know, however you want to express yourself, or if you want to uh wait and be a just a public commenter, that would happen at the end.
Okay, I think it's uh really relevant, uh, especially based on Mr. McDonald, who is so comprehensive. Uh, and I spoke to it the last time that I spoke. You know, the 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 plan is to close the upper end of Old Buella Road, which is a narrow road. And again, he spoke to the fact that we don't we're not given all the facts about this transportation. Now, they have claimed that they have done studies. But on that road, we have school buses, garbage trucks, delivery vehicles, snowplows, all kinds of vehicles that use that road. If they close the upper part, where and how will these vehicles turn around? And how will the students be taken to school? I mentioned this before, and it was I don't know how this study was done. This is just going to be terrible for the young kids. I I mean, I I have no idea how this how the study was done and how it was allowed. I mean, who thought this thing through? I would like to sit with the I I pray that this study could be redone. I'd like to sit with the people who did it. Sit in there and figure this out. No uh fire trucks could get there. Where will they turn around? It makes no sense whatsoever. Even any of the borough the vehicles can't turn around if they close the upper part of Old Buella Road. And so it's it's just it's one of those terrible things that we have not been given the information to, and I protested as do almost all of the residents of our street. It it endangers all of us and all and and all the children that live on that street. That's all. It's a very simple thing that we have to say. This borough, uh, every council member should be against that. And if you're not, then you all should leave the council. It's a simply simple. There are 16 houses on that street. It's a very narrow street. And if you if you're not against it, we should vote every single one of you out. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Ezecoye. Mr. Gallagher, any cross examination questions from Ms. Ezecoye?
Uh, no, Mr. Rob, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other uh parties who would like to cross examine Ms. Ezecoye? We'll give it about 10 seconds here. And then we'll be moving on to uh Mr. Craig Yankis on our list. Unless we've heard from Mrs. Donski, Alex, any word from Ms. Donski? Okay. We'll keep an eye out for her in the future. Uh, I'm not seeing anyone uh seeking to question Ms. Ezecoye. Any Borough Council members have questions for Ms. Ezecoye? Okay, hearing none or seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Ezecoye, for your testimony tonight. We appreciate you.
Okay.
Okay. Um, do we have Mr. Craig Yankis? We have about 30 minutes uh left for tonight, so hopefully we can at least get a start with Mr. Yankis or maybe even finish him up. We'll see what he has to say.
Oh, you'll be able to finish me up easily. I actually didn't think I would be online at all this evening, and so earlier today I emailed in my statement to the website for the borough. I don't see it posted yet, but I'm willing to stick with it.
Thank you, Mr. Yankis. We'll make sure uh that gets marked and uploaded onto the uh Borough website with the rest of the exhibits. Uh, and there's nothing else you want to add to that at this point. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, understanding that council and the other party objectors have not had a chance to review Mr. Yankis's testimony, but have agreed uh throughout to accept written testimony in lieu of uh oral testimony. Um, can I fair to say that there's no no cross examination, Mr. Gallagher?
That is correct, Mr. Rob. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And the rest of the parties, uh, you will raise your hand if you disagree with that. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Yankis. That's uh that's fantastic. We'll move right through. All right, I have uh Mr. Barton Myers next. Barton Myers. You see Mr. Myers anywhere, Alex?
No, I do not.
Bear with us, folks. We're going to give uh Mr. Myers an opportunity to reach out to us here.
So so to be clear, um, the the people who had earlier in the hearing asked to be pro se party objectors have been I've been trying to be in communication with them, trying to tell them their order, trying to give them a heads up what's going on. Uh, we certainly announced this at many public meetings uh which are recorded or on Facebook, YouTube. Uh, so you know, if someone didn't get the memo that tonight could be the night they were presenting, they'll apologize. We're trying to do everything we can. It's likely, though, we're going to continue another evening, and I'll keep reaching out to them to see if they can join us.
Okay, thanks, Alex. Appreciate that. Um, so we'll uh going once, going twice for Mr. Myers. We then have on my list anyway, uh, Ms. Pellegrini. Um, I believe well, let's uh let's confirm, but I believe Ms. Pellegrini may I'll just I'll just ask to uh we'll unmute her. Alex, can you unmute Ms. Pellegrini for from the phone?
She should be good.
She's the 646 number, right?
Yeah, she yeah, she's she's gonna speak.
There we there we go. Ms. Pellegrini, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. I think I've unmuted. Yeah, I would I definitely would prefer not to have to go this way um and be able to figure out the kinks and um uh be on the Zoom. If that would be okay.
So I'm not sure I I'm not sure I'm following exactly. So you're currently
I'm next on the list, but I I'm having these technical issues with Zoom on the computer, so I'm unable to um share a screen or, you know, um participate via Zoom rather than just the phone. So if it's possible to um put me in a different order so that I could work those things out and make my um presentation at the next session, I would appreciate that very much.
So it is your intention to to put on a put on a